Well, my name is Adam Leipman. I'm Vice Chair of the Commission. I'm gonna be kind of running things because Mark is going to be abstaining from the vote since he has a personal conflict of interest technically.
Oh, okay.
So it's gonna be the four of us running and asking the questions.
Okay.
I'll let this go around the room here and...
My name is Jeffrey. I'm a County Commissioner as well.
Okay.
We have some questions or yes, so... It's been nice to meet you.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm Lucas Wakefield. It's a pleasure. Glad you're here.
Ed Brown, Commissioner.
Okay.
Carrie Gottes, Southern State's Attorney.
Okay.
And Mark Olson, I'm the Chairman.
And Kristal, for the audit, sure.
And now that we've all introduced ourselves, I'll ask the first question and say, please tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay. Well, I'm Crystal Biggs and for the past 10 years I've been in HR. I started in Park Construction and I was fortunate. I met my boss at the time. He was a great mentor and I gained a lot of HR knowledge. And then went back for my bachelor's degree and after I obtained that and I went in for my certification for HR. And then once I got that, I moved on to the Director of Human Resources out of Mayville State. That's where I'm currently at. Some of my current responsibilities are anywhere from recruiting to benefits to training to employee conflicts. Them are my main job duties. I do, I'm the liaison for payroll for them also. So I have some payroll in there. Some of my bigger accomplishments since I've been at Mayville State have been, I did the electronic onboarding and payroll system. Just to kind of give you a little bit of history.
Thank you.
Yeah?
I guess you told us a little bit about some of your duties at your current job last job as it relates to HR. If you could expound on some of that, you know, maybe of what you're doing currently with Mayville State and some of the HR responsibilities that you have.
Sure. I'm the only person in the HR department at Mayville State. Of course, I have student workers underneath me, but so I pretty much handle the whole system from the start to the when employees start up with us to getting them their benefits, to their training, to when we see employee conflicts. Pretty much the whole realm of HR I've been handling.
Thank you.
On a day-to-day basis, what would you sort of describe as your regular day? What do you do?
I guess my regular day is if somebody, if we do have a turnover and to start with the recruiting process of that, to getting all the recruiting paperwork in place and to work on trainings throughout the year. I do both faculty and staff trainings. To, the payroll is twice a month, so I handle most of that with, you know, questions and making sure things are accurate. So that consumes a big part of the day to employee conflicts. When they do arise, they're pretty much unknown at the start of the day, but so you kind of gotta be at, you know, where you're flexible during the day with what's happening throughout it.
Tell us about a time you had to deal with a very difficult HR-related issue. What was the situation? What was your role? And how was the situation resolved?
You know, in HR, there's always, I could go into conflicts. I could... I think the biggest one that I come about is with the budget cuts of cars throughout the state right now with the universities. I think dealing with employee issues there, whether or not we can handle holding that position or cutting that position because that has such an effect down, you know, it's down the line. Their families are affected. There's so much affected by that that I think that's kind of been my biggest, the biggest one that I've had to hurdle over. At the end of the day, it comes down to what's best for the university and the situation.
That's how you resolve it, that you watched out for the university?
Right.
So that'd be similar to what you would watch out for the county then here?
Right.
I guess I'll be next again. You told us about one of the programs you initiated, one of the things that you did with Mayville. Can you expound a little bit upon what that project was and everything that went into it and accomplished?
Sure. Geez, with the funeral one, that was a pretty big one because they went from, you know, paper timesheets to moving everything electronic. So it first had to be, I had to be trained on it, of course, to know what I was doing on it. And then it was to make sure we knew exactly how we were gonna push it out to our employees because change is never good, especially if they've been doing it for that way for 25, 30 years. And so making sure that everything was set in place before we pushed it out to our employees, I think was the key part that made it go so smooth. And then the training, of course, with employees, knowing that they weren't just left out there to deal with it on their own, that of course we were there to help them through it and...
Crystal, did you ever experience a time where you were faced with an issue that challenged the integrity or trust of a department or a specific manager within one of your companies that you dealt with? Or, and, you know, just maybe some general circumstances? You know, what did you do to proactively address the situation and what kind of some of the end results were?
You know, that would maybe, I know we've had a couple of manager situations where the people underneath them, their employees, have brought forward some areas of concern. And I always think you gotta tread slow because that could really create a lot more issues if you don't look at everything and, you know, that can really create some problems to that employee, with that supervisor, with retaliation and whatnot. So I've had one that, oh, a current one where a supervisor was selling, I think they were fake beats, the headphone sets, but they weren't the actual thing. And the employee underneath them brought it up, brought it to our pension. And so we had to deal with it and let them know that that can't be done anymore and to keep it confidential that it wasn't, you know, his employee that brought it forward was, I think, the key there, to not put it on that employee, but to know that it's gonna be done.
Crystal, is there a time that you personally had an issue with another employee in an organization that you worked for? And can you tell us a little bit about how you went about handling that?
Oh, gee. You know, I guess I recently have come into conflict with, oh, over in our academic affairs area. We had an assistant that was over there that we had some conflict. She kind of wanted to run a training program and I knew that I was ultimately responsible for it, but we had to work together on it. And so it was just to come down with me and her having the conversation that what each one of us were gonna do and how we were gonna move forward. And I think opening up that line of communication was pretty much key to letting her know at the end of the day I was responsible for it. However, she played an important part with it.
Have you ever been involved with a federal or a state employment audit complaint of civil rights issue where you had to defend and represent organizations' interests? And what was the situation? And what were the end results?
Actually, when I was with Park Construction, we had a project going out in Omaha, Nebraska. And the Department of Labor had come in to do an audit on us. And so it was pretty much getting them all the information that they needed, that they requested. And then just being, it was, I think the key part of it was to be honest with them on how what our practice had been. And it turned out, actually, we came out with one thing that had a violation on it. But however, they were, they knew that we were doing our best to get it corrected. And so they actually turned it over that they wouldn't put through with the violation. So it actually turned out, yeah, I think the thing was to be honest with them about our practices.
Okay. Part of your position here would be assisting us in doing recruiting as well as interviewing. What kind of recruiting tools and interviewing processes have you been using the best?
For the recruiting? Well, currently at Mayville State, how it works is I do all the recruiting on my own, putting it out there. I've done cold calling. I've done, you know, pipeline calling. I've kind of done all the levels of, you know, recruiting because Mayville is pretty remote. We do have a harder time out there getting faculty. And so it is a lot of calling out to get, you know, the word out there that we're looking for somebody. So that part, I've done quite a bit with recruiting. The interviewing process, I've done a lot of sit-in interviews to conducting them, to we, what we do out there at Mayville, we have search committees that we put together for every position. So there's usually a team of us working on that interview process.
Okay. Thank you.
One follow-up question. Are you trying to recruit professors then? Is that who you're after or what other types of jobs would you recruit for?
Yep, our staff employees, from anybody from the business office down to dining services, to facility services, to the vice presidents of the campus. And it's pretty much an recruited vermo.
Professors also?
Yep, and professors.
Okay. Thank you.
What measures have taken to ensure legal compliance with your HR processes? I'm not sure if I even understand that question, but...
What I basically do is annually, I try to go out to run through our policies. I try to run through our, kind of like our new student workers. I try to have them make a list of, for our personnel files, what we need to have in them and run through them to make sure that, you know, it's accurate and that something in the personnel file shouldn't be in a payroll file because of open record and, I mean, so just going through items like that, I think is pretty important to make sure you're in regulations with.
Crystal, are you aware of any complaints that have been filed against you? And if so, could you tell us a little bit about what the nature of those complaints might be?
I don't know of any complaints against me that have come up. Yeah, I don't know of any that. Not to say that I'm perfect by any means, but...
I'll try this. So what types of retention rates of new hires at your former position? I mean, the people that you recruited for Mayville, you got them hired or they stayed?
You know, for the most part, our retention has been good. We do also run a daycare on the side also. So of course, our turnover there is a little bit higher. We're trying to work on that turnover though with putting, you know, more something for hooks in them, you know, so they stick around with us longer. We've been trying to do things like that.
Okay. And it's been successful?
You know what? So far, we've seen just a little bit of a rise with it that we're keeping them there. However, I think we have a little ways to go with the daycare part there. It's just such a high turnover with that type of employment. So, but I think there's areas that could be done, open our way.
Part of the job here obviously would be doing training with staff. Have you conducted, obviously, any kinds of harassment training in the past? What type and what was your role?
For harassment training, I've been both doing it, putting it on my own, conducting the training. I've also shown videos during the training. I've shown videos. We've had a couple of web videos because we do have some off-site people from the campus.
Once you've done this, have you worked with outside, what kind of outside entities have you worked with?
Outside, you know what? I pretty much have put them on myself.
Okay.
Have there been any identifiable results from trainings that you have conducted?
You know, I just had a recent training. It was for our pre-service, and that is for all faculty. It was mandatory. It's a day training. And one of the trainings I did put on is, I did a survey, of course, before I started with the process of the trainings, putting on the trainings. But I picked five key areas that had been coming up a lot that I'd seen the topic of a lot. And what I did is I put them out for faculty to ask any questions, for any topic, you know, anything that they wanted to be covered with that specific topic. And that was really successful because now throughout the year, we're gonna be putting on trainings for them topics because now we know exactly what they're looking for in them topics. And I've put on two trainings so far that's come out of that. And it's the comments and what we've got back from it has been really good.
I don't know how I keep ending up with the complaint question, but have you ever had a complaint where you were involved in an investigation? And if so, how did you handle the investigation? What were the results?
You know, I haven't been in one where I've been in, like, part of the problem.
No, 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 managing the process of investigating a complaint and...
Oh, investigating the complaint? Yeah, I've had quite a few of them. And I'm also the title line coordinator for the campus. And what that is, is the sexual assaults. And so I do, I pretty much oversee the whole process of that. I don't actually do the investigations of them, but I set up all the investigations to happen and oversee the whole process of it. From employee conflicts, investigating them would be, you know, when you do get the complaint, pull each of the employees in separately to try to get to the bottom of what's going on and getting each side of the story and then to bring, try to bring them together and to get that conflict out and then try to get it resolved.
Okay. What kind of recruiting tools and interviewing processes have you used?
I think we've had that one already. Where we can cross off 16. It's been... Same as 9, same as 9.
What measures have you taken to ensure legal compliance with the process?
Did I just sense or something?
No, that's okay. We all just...
But now I'm prepared for them questions.
Trying to trick you.
Taking another crack at it. I actually have another question, which is, as I'm sure you're aware, HR isn't just putting out fires. It's taking action to ensure that fires don't start in the first place and to help ensure employee excellence in terms of interpersonal skills and interdepartment workings. And so if you were offered a job here, what sorts of things do you think that you would want to include as far as proactively reaching out to employees here to try to improve outcomes?
You know, I guess I think the first thing with HR is to always get to know the employees because you always want them employees to feel comfortable to come to you with concerns because if they're not comfortable coming to you with the concerns, it's just gonna fester and it's gonna cause a lot more problems down the road. So I think that's always key to get out there and get, you know, get acquainted with the employees right off the get-go. And of course, acquaint yourself still what policies and procedures are right off the get-go. But I think that's pretty much key to make sure that the employees know that you're approachable and that they can come to you.
Another question or follow-up I'd like to ask. You said you watched out for the best interest of Mayville State. And then I commented you'd watch out for the best interest of Ramsey County. And that means the best interest of the commission. And how would you go about that?
I guess it would depend on the situation. If we have an issue arises, I guess it would probably be to bring it to the commission before making any decisions on it, on how the vice wanted to see it proceed and what kind of outcome you would want. And what Mayville State, I have, there's a cabinet that I, every once in a while, if there's an issue that arises, I have to go and present to them, you know, make sure to get their approval on how we move forward with it. So I don't, I don't, I kind of see that as a similar situation.
Yes, I do, yeah. One of the things we talked about at the commission when we were looking for an HR person is we want the HR person to meet with the commission once a month. And we meet twice a month.
Oh, sure.
So it wouldn't matter what meeting it was at, but we want the HR person physically be here with the commission once a month.
Sure. And would that be just to give you kind of updates of what I'm seeing?
Absolutely.
Okay, sure.
Any potential problems, I suppose? You see no problem with that?
No, not at all.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I do, actually. Sort of, you know, we've asked a lot of questions about how you've gone about doing your job. This question's more to the nature of why would you want to work here?
Well, you've probably seen my application that I saw that's gotten transferred down here to Mayville State. And I want to try really hard to stay in HR because that's my passion is HR and employees and being a resource for them. So when I seen this one come open and I sprinted through it, I was like, that's just like perfect. So I, that's, I think it'd be a great place to work. And I've listened to quite a few of your commissioner meetings on YouTube and...
So you're gonna, it's part-time? You're okay with that? And you've gone from a full-time position to a part-time and...
Yeah. My husband, he's a state employee, so he carries the benefit package for us. And, I mean, we have kids at home yet, so at part-time is kind of a nice situation for me right now.
When we had discussed this as a commission previously, I guess we haven't talked about, but we have talked about how many hours would you be looking at wanting to work a week? We're kind of flexible in terms of hours and maybe to a point.
Sure. You know, I guess I would be game for any kind of situation. I work currently full-time right now. However, I, you know, I could stay full-time. It doesn't bother me. I would rather not. I'd rather go to a part-time situation. However, I'm game for any type of hours. So yeah, I'm not too...
And you are willing to spend time on the, you know, courthouse premises to ensure that, you know, you have an open door for people to come and air complaints if they have them?
Yeah. I think that would be important for an HR person to have office hours and to have an office where they can come to and to know when them office hours are. Because I guess I would want them to be able to know when they can come and come and go. So yeah, I've always had at Mayville State, I've always had to like open-door policy where no matter what I'm working on, doing, if there's an issue, they just need to come in. And that's where you go.
Adam, did you want to share what your hours were? Thank you.
Yeah, we've been talking between 12 and, you know, 8 and 16 hours a week. Kind of 8, 12, somewhere in there was, it's been kind of our thought process, but we're flexible too.
And I think, I think part of that has to do with we're not quite sure what the need will be. You know, and then I think that we're especially flexible to add more time if it becomes evident that there is a need for it amongst...
Okay, sure.
Yeah, and obviously, I'm sure you're probably aware, we can watch through YouTube. This isn't the position, you know, we haven't, we've had people in the past that we've contracted with, but we've never had an actual in-house HR person. So it's gonna be a little bit kind of a crafting the position type of situation as well.
Okay. Yeah, and I kind of wondered on that piece, who handled it before? If it was an outside agency or a person?
You know, the contracted person.
Okay.
We haven't had one for two years, three?
Yeah, it's been at least two to three years now. So, and we felt that this would be a better way forward for the county with the amount of employees we have now. So it's gonna be, like I said, kind of a step into it and build a position from the ground up.
Sure.
So that's partially why we're not quite sure on how many hours, but we have a baseline where we kind of want to start next.
Sure.
And Andy, what's the poll of employees? Around 60 of those? Close to that somewhere?
We include social services. It's, yeah, it's almost 70.
Okay, for a full-time workplace. Sure. Is there any conflicts right now or any areas of challenges right now that are...
Thankfully, I don't think there are. I don't think the fire is burning or anything. I just don't come in with an empty pot.
I don't think there's any serious conflicts, you know, that we can, I can tell.
But, but a major impetus for pursuing someone to fill this role is to make sure that that answer doesn't become yes.
Right, yeah.
Right, you know, so...
Yeah.
Any other questions from the commission?
Do you have any questions for us? I was gonna ask after that.
You know, that was kind of my biggest thing, wondering what kind of, what situations you had going right now. So, yeah. What, do you see the biggest challenge of this position being for the person that comes in?
Myself, I think it's the idea of representing the county commission. For example, representing the county, you know, we represent employees also, but we need to take care of what the interest, the best interest of the county.
Sure.
And you talked about reduction in salaries on the state level. And there was no increases whatsoever. That must have been quite brutal at times to tell people if they had to lose their job or, you know, that would be tough. But everybody takes a little cut, but it isn't too bad. I know the state has had a lot of situations like that. The best interest is to watch out for the county itself. And that's what we need in HR person to do.
Yeah. And to expand on Ed's comments, I don't know if you're familiar with how our county government kind of functions to a point, but the five of us are the boss for everybody but the elected officials. So we have the auditor, the state's attorney to share, the recorder and treasurer. I hopefully I'm not forgetting anyone. But so it's an interesting environment where, you know, it makes for, we all work together well, but there are times where there are, you know, situations where headbutt a little bit here and there. So it makes for a little bit of a different work environment where there's not like at Mayville State, there's a president of the university and everybody else answers to the president. Here, it's a little bit different. So that's kind of a challenge at times, I think. But it's nothing that can't be...
I'd like to ask you how that cabinet worked. How many were on there? And just give me a rundown of who's on there.
Sure. It was, I want to say it's there's seven on there. We had like the president for us and then like the VP of Business Affairs, VP of Academic Affairs, Student Affairs, and then like a foundation director. The athletic director was on there. So yeah, it's kind of made up the cabinet, or we accept the cabinet.
That's kind of what you answered to then?
Nope, I actually answered to the VP of Business Affairs.
Okay.
Yep. However, they did pull me in quite a bit because HR, they used to have the HR position report to the president and then when I came on, they reported it back to the VP of Business Affairs. So it kind of got to be like a fine line of where that VP wanted to get involved and where he just wanted maybe come to cabinet to explain it and do with that, right? So, yeah. How can I ask?
Does anyone have a question for us?
Yeah, how soon are you looking for somebody to start in this position?
Whenever you're ready.
Yeah, pretty much is, yeah.
As soon as whoever we decide to offer to is ready to go.
If you're ready.
Do you want to make any, you know?
My husband's over here now. Just actually got our house built over in Thompson. So hopefully, it'll be a couple of weeks out of getting reconnected again and so, yeah.
Great. Well, thank you so much for your time, guys.
Yes. It was nice to meet everybody. I wouldn't say I remember everybody's name right now. Nice to meet you, yes. Nice to meet you, yes.
So very nice to meet you.
Yes, you too.
Thank you for having me.
Yes. I look forward to hearing from all you guys.
Eventually, we might even hear from you.
I was around the fire, so I put some songs together. Thank you, everybody.
Questions?
Yeah.
I'll be amazed.
Pretty much. Pretty much, I've just made a bigger, so. Two, one, a few minutes before I go, a few minutes, thirty, just...
Well, I guess, does anyone have any specific thoughts or comments that they feel the need to share before we do the next question?
Yeah.
Just bring it out. You're just here to make sure we don't ask any inappropriate questions?
The guest hall or everything. I'm just here to take notes.
Do you have something else?
I think, you know, very well qualified, but maybe, you know, her...
You know, yeah, she's got sort of this holistic kind of everything surveys to find out what the issues are, but we're gonna spend time doing training like with their policy. So she's also flexible on schedule and has with experience and yeah, she's very qualified. There, that's my laptop.
She's a very common factor, simply.
Oh, on you go. I was just thinking, it almost could be good to report to have you as the person is. Yeah, but like the officials here, you know. I don't. I like it footbilled.
How come my laptop email does not match my desktop? Do you wanna print out the questions? Because they're not in the mail right now.
You can ask him.
That's perfect. We're right ahead, right there, yeah, we know. We don't have to, so we just have to pick.
Whichever one you pick is the hot seat.
That's right. Uh, we'll start with, yes, thank you. We'll start with formal introductions, I'm Adam Leibman, Vice Chair, I'll be running the meeting, Mark, those you. So I'll be running the meeting. And we will turn your job for us.
Looks white filled, we're glad you're here.
Hiya, thanks.
Carrie, about this, thanks for being, hi.
Me again.
And Kristoff, it's an auditor.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Given that you know who we are, I'll open with the first kind of preliminary question, just please tell us a bit about yourself.
I'm Gabrielle Krantz, not born and raised here, but been here my whole life. And extensive business background, I've been in business for over 35 years. Decided to sell the business and get out of that business environment. Just pertinent to this interview, I've been involved in hiring over 85 employees in my business background. I also have a consultant business on the side, so I consult the businesses. And thank you for having me today.
Thank you.
I guess kind of relates to some of your comments, but what were some of your duties in your current or last job as it relates to HR?
Hiring, firing, employee disputes, trying to calm the waters, every aspect of a small business. My degree is in Business Administration, heavy emphasis on business management, but I took lots of courses in personnel. That's a, that's a fun animal to address, is happy employees.
Could you please describe for us a typical day in your current position?
I'm in between, I've been a business owner for 35 years, so I think that's what I know the best. So right now, I'm just kinda working part-time, just kinda took a break. Working 50 to 60 hours a week is pretty much my norm. Every aspects of small business, from advertising, doing the day-to-day work, bookkeeping, accounting, hiring, firing, like I said, calming the waters with employee disputes, there weren't many. But anytime you get more than two employees, there's gonna be, not everybody's happy. At the end of the day, just wanted to be a profitable day, wanted happy employees because I think happy employees within a budget gives us all that good vision of where we wanna be and our goals. And happy people are happy in their jobs. We're very efficient then, I think you can run very smoothly, very detail oriented. I like to dot those i's, cross those t's, that's one of my strengths. Yet it can be a weakness too, because sometimes I can be too detail oriented. For example, I was asked in my consulting business on the side, this is very recent, to come up with an employee manual. And I came up with a good employee manual, so that was a success. One of the failures was, the business told me it's too thick. So I went back and dotted those i's, crossed those t's again, it wasn't a failure, but I thinned it down. I had too many details in it, so I kind of addressed that and learned from that, so.
Provide an overview of your past HR-related functions in the past jobs you've held. What have you done with HR and how do you handle?
Obviously, the hiring, the firing, handling employee conflicts, big on that back in the day when we hired a lot of people. Like I said, happy people makes a happy workplace. I had one employee just say, you know, I need a raise. And I said, okay, that's, that's the conflict here, I wanna raise. And I said, well, it's not really the conflict. And I said, well, what is the conflict? Do you wanna raise, do you want, what else do you want? And she was just unhappy in her position with another coworker. So I said, okay, let's do some proper channels here. And I made her just write out kind of a complaint form that I'm sure the County has, City has, everybody has a complaint. The proper channels, I like a paper trail. And so she wrote everything down and it found out it wasn't, money wasn't her motivator. She was just unhappy with the relationship with one of her coworkers. So kind of diffuse that, made her happy. She didn't want the raise because quite honestly, I told her, I said, it's just not in the cards this year, our profit margins are down. And I ended up giving her some relaxation time and some paid time off. She was a happy camper, and resolved that conflict.
Thank you.
Will you kind of answer the next question of the should use service?
Oh, okay.
That's okay. Give us an example of a project or a program that you initiated in your position as an HR person. What was the project and its purpose? How did you go about starting it and then implementing the project, what was the result?
Well, the most recent project was an employee manual pertinent to this business that I was hired on as a consultant for. And so I researched, researched, researched each and every business that I consult with and came up with the employee handbook that, like I said, was too thick. And I just put it on a diet and scaled it down and they were quite happy with it, so.
Thank you.
Did you ever experience a time where you were faced with an issue that challenged the integrity and trust of a department or a specific manager within one of the organizations you worked for? What type of circumstances did you face generally? And what did you do to proactively address the situation? And what type of end results did you experience?
I think that kind of brings back to, kinda like Ed's question, the employee conflict. I really like to stress the proper channels, I mean, there needs to be a complaint form. There's two sides to every story. You have to do things with legalities. I think the end result of what I was addressing Ed's question was, you know, a happy employee. Who's happy and passionate to be there.
Thank you. Can you tell us a time where you personally had a conflict or an issue with an employee? And how did you go about handling that?
I had a conflict or an issue with an employee coming in late consistently. And as a manager, that time was pretty easygoing, but it was really chronic. And it started to really bug me that, you know, if you're there, asked to be there at eight o'clock, you should be there at eight o'clock, not at eight-ten, not at eight-twenty, for just no real excuse. I really didn't care what the excuse was because I hired her to be on here at eight o'clock in the morning. It was just chronic. And then I thought, well, you could either get upset about this or you could just resolve this conflict. So I said, I just need to know when you're late every morning. And she said, because my daycare lady runs late. And I said, I wish you would've told me that because it just eases my mind and I just keep getting, you know, more angry every day. And it was, it was over a long month, so I have a long fuse. And I said, oh, so it's your daycare lady? And she said, yeah, and you know, I apologize and please don't fire me. And I said, okay, so let's resolve this. We're gonna start at eight-thirty, but you're gonna work till five-thirty instead of eight to five. And she said, oh, well, that just works real, real fine to me, so we'll just kind of easy solution for her. And me.
Have you been involved with a federal audit or state employment audit complaint to civil rights issue where you had to defend or represent the organization's interests?
I have not.
You've never been involved with that?
I have not. If I were involved in something like that, I'd be researching the heck out of it to get prepared for that, but I have not.
You see anticipating problems if you were involved in something like that?
I would not, I would just be honest, be head-on with them, try to be prepared. Paper trail.
Paper trail, yeah, true. Where you go on it, so.
No, thank you. In the past, what kinds of recruiting tools and interviewing processes have you used?
Okay, let me tell you about my failure at that. I was involved in a recruiting program, we did print media, I believe it's radio ads, and didn't address the social media. Failed with just print and radio, just failed miserably. Taught myself how to do the social media aspect. And I'll tell you, that is, as you all know, that is just the way of the world right now with social media, so. Facebooking, I just, this is past year, built my own webpage, was pretty satisfied with that. Built my own Facebook Business Consultant page and I was very satisfied with that. Plus, I got the blessing of my two sons, 29 and 31, and said, they were pretty proud of me. I didn't ask them for any help was the key, I just did it on my own. It was cheaper that way, just doing it on my own, both emotionally and financially.
What measures have you taken to ensure legal compliance with your HR processes?
Well, I've been in the small business world, so legality on hiring is everything, obviously, you know, race and age and gender and ethnicity and disability and income, you just, you can't hire, you can't discriminate based on that, so. You have to be, that has to be real pertinent in your hiring process, I must say, so.
Have you ever had any complaints filed against you personally that you're aware of or any other kind of injunction or anything?
In the human resources world or employees in that kind of world?
With respect to any employer, employee relations or any other sort of?
I have not.
What types of retention rates of new hires have you had at your positions?
In the small business world, my retention rate was great. People stayed on for many, many, many years.
Have, in the past, have you conducted any types of training, specifically harassment training? What type specifically and what was your role?
I have not conducted any harassment training. I have sat in on harassment training, that is the extent of that. But something that's not on my resume, I love to give presentations, so.
Yeah, have you conducted, no, let's see, I was the one before, any identifiable results from training that you have conducted? HR or otherwise, you must've done some training in your small businesses.
Right, right, I was the lead trainer. Good results. I feel you train thoroughly, not a five-minute training. It doesn't matter what position you're in, what realm of the world it is, thorough training. And to be quite honest, you train diligently and constantly. I don't think if you're an employee, if you're management, if you're a county commissioner, you know everything there is in the world about your position. You're always learning, so, and you're always training.
Again, all complaints all the time. Have you ever received a complaint from one of your employees that resulted in you needing to conduct an investigation or be a part of an investigation in any way, and so what were the results?
I have not been a part of that, thankfully, like a criminal investigation or just an investigation?
Anytime that you actually needed to try to get to the bottom of a sort of a multiple, you know, multiple sources, different stories situation, just what the results were? How you went about trying to find an answer that was closest to the truth?
Just being very thorough, again, the paper trail, there's two sides to every story. Again, just being very thorough and very educated on the conflict. And then that end goal is to have happy people.
That's one of the related ones.
Those are all the questions that are standard, so.
Follow-up, I guess, you spent a lot of time talking about the businesses you ran, but can you switch gears and be a human resource person in the future?
I certainly would welcome that. When I was in college, that was kind of my secret love, I just loved the human resources aspect of it. But back in the day at U N D, there wasn't a HR major, so you had to take more of an umbrella major. But I took all of the courses, organizational development, organizational behavior, every course I could get my hand on, so.
Is there, you feel you'll have to take some follow-up studies or some research on what would need for?
I, according to your needs, I would be happy to take any courses, I would be happy to teach those courses. Yeah, I love career development.
You realize there are gonna have to be some?
Oh, yes, every situation is different according to your needs. For example, I definitely research or take a career development course on legalities, which change, you know, some legal aspects of hiring that probably in the legislature changed a little bit. So of course, that's all in research, yeah. I'm real big on career development and training. Every job is so different.
And a question that I have is, you know, in addition to putting out fires, you know, what can you do if you were to be hired to be proactive and to try to strengthen interdepartmental and inter-employee communication and ensure that people are working together to the best of their abilities and instead of being any kind of a hindrance to actually be of benefit to each other? Are there any sorts of programs or trainings or conversations that you believe could be had to accomplish that?
Well, interesting that you brought that up, I have a younger son and the core of his thesis was on what is an employee motivator? And what first comes to mind is money. Wow, there's obviously always a, what if there is no money? And in his thesis, and I don't claim to understand his whole thesis, cause there's a lot of big words in there, that money was, in his experiment, money was not the motivator. It was something as simple as like I mentioned, personal time off. One of the subjects in his study said, all I want is to barbecue and to have management say, you're doing a good job. He didn't want any money. So of course, for your needs, you would have to, I'd have to research those needs. I'd have to research the department, but first thing that comes to mind is money is always the motivator. And it is proven that it is not, so that's something I can bring to the table. I have lots of other ideas, career enhancement. Some employees love to take courses on enhancing their career, I'm one of those. Giving presentations, for example, on some conflict resolution between two employees.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, any further questions?
You realize you meet twice a month, a commission, and we want the HR person to meet with the commission at least once a month on a monthly basis, physically be here. You have no problem?
I have no problem with that. I have a pretty open schedule, a nice relaxed work schedule.
And that's what we want the HR person to do is watch out for the best interest of the company.
Exactly, and your vision.
Yeah.
And also to watch the bottom line and maybe say goodnight here and there. Plus making people happy.
So you're familiar with the, we as a commission have discussed in the past hours and things. Do you have a particular amount of hours a week you're looking to work or?
I'm very open to whatever your needs are. Eight to ten hours to twenty is great, it just depends what your needs are. I'm not going to be upset if you only need to be four hours. And I'm not gonna be upset if you need to be twenty hours, so.
Okay. Yeah, and part of the, just informational off the back of that is, you know, we've discussed it because obviously this is a new position.
It is, yes.
We don't know exactly how many hours a week we're going to be needing as we step into it. So we're, yeah, we're pretty open and it might be start at eight and maybe move to twelve or sixteen hours.
Right, as well as I'm very open to that since it's kind of a new charter position here.
Very good, thank you. Do you have any questions for us, I guess?
I do not. Downloaded a few of the things on Ramsey County's site. Whoever administrates Ramsey County's site is what an excellent webpage. Excellent, easy to navigate because not all of us are techno geeks and very easy to navigate. And I saw your complaint form, just downloaded it, kind of perused it a little bit, looked great. Although, it's always been just kind of bugs me on applications, job applications, that they're just kind of stuck in the, I don't wanna say dark ages, but some of the job applications are a little dated. I've always wanted on a job application to have just an essay portion. I know not everybody's great at writing skills and so on, but you can convey and can communicate a few things, just in a little essay box. Kind of goes back to the college days of when there was essays and pre-technology and pre-computers that you can tell a lot by somebody, just a little paragraph that they write. Why do you want this job? And then they just kind of put that down, so. Just as a, like a prerequisite on a job application, I just thought that would be fun to throw out there someday.
And like the commission, we should bring this up now. The commission's talked before that we want the HR person to be in the building, physically in the building. So we can work with the people that are needed.
Right.
And whatever it is, is eight or whatever we agree on as far as hours, twelve or whatever, so. And we'll be setting up an office. But I won't be very big, will I? It'd be huge and neat, I'm sure.
Basically, if I just have, if you just have a laptop and just kind of had a chair, that's kind of a nice little office.
Well, as long as it's, the hours are consistent and employees know when you're gonna be there.
Right.
I think is.
Communication is utmost, yes.
So they feel comfortable coming in, coming in and knowing when you're gonna be there.
Exactly, to address concerns and so on.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thanks for having me.
Appreciate it.
I'm about half, half the world right now, we haven't even been.
Is it too hot? Careful what you're saying?
I'm.
I'm gonna have to go drink a water, three cups of coffee today. Flipped away.
Got the set sixty-eight, so.
I don't actually always need.
It was really saying, sixty-eight means, sixty-eight means seventy-five.
I think we're on, just have the AC turned off.
Yeah.
Through the season, yeah.
It happens.
You know, why we, why we can't run both units at the same time is beyond me. Because it's cool in the morning, it's hot in the afternoon, it's.
It's that weird time of the year.
It's that weird time of the year, you know, we get that in the spring and the fall. You know, and then maybe time to get more than two people in the room, but you know.
I stepped up probably in my house and then what heat pumps in. I put in one of those central units with heat pumps in, so I can flood from heat the night that this flip over to go set conditioner.
It's a tornado watch, oh.
Tornado warning came up on.
Well, there's a warning, where's that at now?
I don't know, I didn't dare.
Hopefully it's not here. Are you supposed to go to the basement?
Don't they normally?
You just stand outside and say, bring it on. No, I don't.
Anyway.
Tornado watch until twelve AM Wednesday.
We have half long until our, we get to our normal meeting.
Well. I think we have to, don't we?
That's a good question, ask for a state attorney. I would guess in a conflicted situation, we have to.
That would be, that would be my thought.
But it's very difficult for me to have six-digit password.
We can, we need to, we need to keep the recorder on correct.
So don't be talking about.
No, 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 I'm not saying that.
No, no, just, just for when we discuss who would like to hire, has to stay on correct.
I would imagine historically you have kept it on.
Okay, well then, there we go.
As long as there's no lawsuit, so.
If only we had an HR person. So I guess I'm willing to start off sort of with my thoughts. My impression of both candidates was that either one could be in a position at some point to do the job that we're asking them to do. But further, my impression was that Crystal is currently prepared to do it. Currently has the training and the expertise where Gabriel, you know, might be able to do a good job at some point. I think that the fact that, you know, Crystal has all of her credentials completed as well as relevant work experience in a large setting with lots of employees and in a position more likened to what she would be in a position here. I think that that, you know, gives her some merit. That's it.
Yeah, I tend to agree from the point of, Crystal probably has more background when it comes to, I would guess, conflict resolution. Resolution, where she's not part of the actual, you know, process. Where she's kind of that impartial third party, obviously being, I don't know how many places Mabo State has, but.
Three hundred it looks like.
Yeah, it's a fairly decent sized university, so she's done a lot of, you know, hiring, interviewing, retention, a lot of conflict management, I would guess in the past. That she's the title line coordinator there, that's a pretty in-depth situation too, so she's got a lot of experience. So I'll just do that. Do this, and I agree, I think Gabriel would be eventually signed with her, she's, you know, you know, hit the ground running versus we would have to do a little bit more training, I think, up front, probably. You know, we have to invest, but we're gonna have to invest in either candidate, so. That's just where I believe she'd be.
Commissioner Fred?
Yeah, that's, I agree with both of you. You know, it's, it's a very difficult decision because I've known Gabriel for a number of years. Light her as a person, but I realize that has to, can play into my decision on, on how we're deciding this. I do think that eventually, I think she'd be ready and able to do this position. I think with the experience that Crystal brings to the table, then she'd be ready to step in and start.
And I think, I think being able to bring on some of the best practices that Mabo State, you know, have spent years and years working on, so it will look that, could be very helpful.
Well, that, and the difficult situation that the state university systems have gone through with their budget situation. You know, fortunately, we're not in that position where we're, we're looking for low employees or anything like that. But hopefully we never become that situation.
Commissioner, do you have any thoughts in?
Well, I didn't notice there, turn your qualification line, Crystal. Cause I wanna see if she graduated from Mabo State. I don't know why I would. Cause there isn't a.
Didn't she graduate from U N D?
Well, it says she earned, she earned the bachelor's. It says she earned a degree, so I don't know how you can earn a degree if you're a graduate. Did she, she, does she resonate with this?
Education, PhDs right here, Bachelor's, Science and Business Administration, Mabo University.
Oh, she was Mabo then?
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think Crystal, very hard, there's no question about that. She's got all the experience, I mean, I'm not available either. She'd be come up to speed pretty fast, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's good that we have two willing persons. Well. In the parameters that we set forth in our advertising for this, does anyone have that in front of them? What did we set for a budget range and what did we set for an hour standard?
I don't have this page yet. I'm sorry. Maybe you can see that square mark.
It's gotta be the left. Position provides for a highly flexible work schedule at the rate of twenty-four to thirty-five per hour. From your experience.
Twenty-two graduate.
Did you check twenty-four to thirty-five?
Twenty-four to thirty-five.
And it doesn't, did not give a minimum number of hours or anything?
It just said a highly flexible work schedule.
Okay. Yeah, and the twenty-four to thirty-five, we set off the, off the state's guideline, breaking it down, so.
How many hours are we looking at?
I think, I like the idea of twelve. Where you have one full workday in the courthouse and then a total of half a day expected for any other issues that may arise. But that seems reasonable to me, at least as a starting point, though I'm certainly open to any discussion on that note.
What do we have budgeted in our prelim budget?
Twenty-two.
Oh, twenty-two dollars?
Which should be more than enough to carry us through class for next year. We've got fourteen, so we're gonna get this year. So if we did twelve hours.
Really, yeah.
Fifty-two weeks. Fifty-six, twenty-four, we got twenty-two budgeted. That gets you to thirty-five, twenty-five. So we could, we could fit twelve hours in a week, and then we could always adjust our budget accordingly, you know, because we don't have a final yet.
Would you use twenty-five?
I, I just took twelve hours a week times fifty-two weeks, and then, and that gave us six hundred and twenty-four hours. And I divided the twenty-two thousand, I budgeted by that six twenty-four, it gives us thirty-five, twenty-five an hour.
Right.
So we've got enough.
You budgeted enough to make sure that we could meet the top of that range?
Thirty-five, I think.
Thirty-five, twenty-five, thirty-five dot, you know, thirty-five dollars and quarters, and quarter, thirty-five and quarter. Would get you, would be what we have budgeted for at twelve hours a week.
At twelve?
Yeah, at twelve hours a week.
Looked it off our states, it turned me out as an opinion.
I mean, these are just opinions, they don't, don't matter. Well, they do matter, well, you know what I mean.
I think that when you consider Ramsey County as a whole, as an organization, so to speak, a unique organization, but an organization nonetheless, with a variety of offices and unique positions. I think that, as everyone has said, we had two good candidates, I just think that Crystal is off and running very quickly on it. The other thing, the types of issues, at least coming from my past appointments that I've had, and I suspect Seaman will tell me, conflict resolution, grievance policies, training, do a little bit of research before and find out what your training needs are. These are all areas that I think Crystal brings, that she's had hands-on experience with. Like Seaman, I think Gabrielle, with a little bit of, you know, with some career development, could get there. So if that's what you're wanting, might be one of them, Gabrielle, she's half, you know, ready to get to her running. Certainly Gabrielle would get there as well, and she had some, she had some experience in the small business world with kind of the one-on-one employee take issues. And then in her consulting work, she's done some, you know, she's started to branch out and get some of that in different areas. As for the pay range, I think the amount of an hour is the eight to twelve is flexible. And if you go to the top of the scale, I think that's fine based on both candidates. And then what we're asking of them with such a minimum schedule. The only thing I caution is just to think about, you have to get six months into this. Yeah, we don't, you've never had, Ramsey County's never had a HR person invested in a building kind of like this. So you may find somebody coming and saying, all the policies need to be revamped. I've talked to all the department heads and they want training in this, 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 this. I'm just saying, it's something to consider, is this eight to twelve hours gonna become twenty hours? Or, you know, so those are things just to kind of, all of that stuff to kind of weigh, when you make your decision. Those are my thoughts.
Well, and to your point, both expressed willingness to work more hours if needs be. I think something that would make sense to me, and again to your point, is that potentially this is something that the commission could reevaluate six months in. You know, and perhaps as a, as a reassurance to whomever we offered the job to, you'd say that the number of hours will not be decreased at the six-month mark, but they may be increased. You know, so that that way you don't have no job security or afraid that you're gonna cut off the one at market. Then that, that would be a way, I think, to ensure that we give ourselves a little bit of flexibility to change that at that point.
I think we should check out some of these.
Do you feel that? Do you feel that, uh, either or both of these candidates will still be in the job market and time is the next commission to be in? If we're gonna take the time to check these references?
Well, do we all want to, uh, make a decision based on checking references?
Oh, yeah, we could we could offer a contingent, a contingent, I have an offer.
That's what we always did hiring in the state. We picked, we wanted to offer it to any results of the background and.
You don't see the background.
Yeah.
Right, that would be that would be the way that I would do it.
And the practices.
It's contingent upon background checking references. So I think that that would be, that would be reasonable. Uh, what would we think is a dollar amount? Uh, thirty two dollars an hour, is it reasonable?
He's not one of the other ones looking for coming for.
Twenty five.
Twenty five, you have that much experience here. Maybe you want one? I don't want to pay you much room for opting if you.
I'd like to see where in the middle if we could. We had that twenty five to thirty five. Save that thirty dollar range, now we're just, we're looking after that.
Well, I'm not gonna spend it, I'm scared we have to start a discussion somewhere. So what's what's your opinion, thirty?
I think I look twenty seven, um, if I close that out, I'm not there yet. Twenty nine, is it out there?
I believe yourselves to negotiate around too, then they come back with a higher, higher number.
So what are our wishes then at this point, kind of throwing bunches down over there?
How many hours are we looking at? And, well, I prefer twelve. Like I said before, social services not gonna be a person at all. A doctor, sheriff, this Martin, he couldn't see, he'd be using a very old, a person.
I think if it's there.
Or there?
I think if it's there, it's going to be more more than what they say.
Well, yeah, and the sheriff doesn't necessarily share his employees or, you know.
I guess he don't buy it in the past, I don't think he would.
You know, he himself may not use it, but his employees might. It may come in handy, certainly has, you know, he has turnover. You know, for interviewing processes and things like that, and so.
Right, well, I mean, you don't you don't put insurance on a vehicle because you intend to get into a crash. Bumper cars.
I I hit a lot of gears. All right, I need some, that's a good addition.
I think I think it's there and it's available, but. You know, even though social services says they probably won't use it, I think that they'll.
But we don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
Or that they wouldn't, you know, that, you know, they would maybe revert to.
I would think their intent is to not use it at all, it's just it's just, you know, at this time, they don't know how much they'll use it.
Right.
Just kind of feel like after all, I guess.
It's not going to, sorry, I've got an hour.
Well, I've I've got an hour, I thought I thought they meant an hour.
I thought you'd be in truthful.
No, I thought they meant an hour or two a week ago, they could die or. That's what that's what my understanding was, I might be wrong.
They should change the night.
Well, somebody comes down to, you know, in their situation, their specific employee training and stuff, they do a lot of stuff. I've never had it.
Like we say, it's pretty much a contracted position. After any year or. Or you know, sort of, you know, whatever, I'm not gonna say that's gonna happen, but can always.
I guess, you know, I'm not gonna vote, but I I can throw my observations in there. My one observation, I guess, that stands out to me is that she's way overwall. Is she like, is she gonna be content or is she gonna just, the death school or somebody else come along and she's just gonna stop us? That's a big concern with her. I mean, I know you can't control that, but she she's. She's vacuuming cars and she should be overhauling race cars for that deal.
Well, she did.
And and I know she she's she said she was looking forward to us slowing down, but, you know, just, that's just my thoughts on that, that, you know, my gosh, she's.
I think once given that position, she may find that she really enjoys.
Absolutely. You know, and some some people like a little less stressed.
Well, yeah, we do have a lot of discussion. I had to get everybody in time if you want it.
It's not warming here.
It's humid.
She comes in like this, right, so it's not warming here.
Well, it's humid, so I don't know if it's warm, I think it's warm too. Cordial air conditioning.
Can you get over there?
Well, thank you.
Can I sit next to her?
Sure. Little constant.
Not really, man.
Yes, it is. This sprinkling as I was, my glasses are all sprinkled up. The end one was. I didn't even try. There were two people standing up there, I thought, maybe they were trying to get in.
I would love you.
So.
I would love you.
That one was open, but I don't know if the front door is. This is good shoe squeaking weather.
Shoe squeaky, are you mean squeaky squeaky?
Nobody wants to sit in the front pew with me.
Oh, oh, it was.
I'm just like chirp chill.
What's it with you?
I just stuff.
Oh, thank you, yeah, I had to get it stood out with the black lace in the bottom.
I can hear the gears switching over there.
No, that's the that's the coffee time.
I'm coming, I'm coming.
It's a coffee time.
What did you bring first?
Oh, okay, just just for documents, I, uh, I, I get printed out the, this is the the J I B website, when I just put the rest up on the here.
Okay. Yeah, how's the new business going, Mr. Olson?
Well, since we started, um, October, end of October.
Yeah, I haven't come home and smelled.
Every month, step two.
Wonderful.
That's not what, never mind, I'm not gonna say it.
No, the camera's on, don't say it. No, I do like it.
Pardon me?
Have you been down there?
I have not.
You should come down.
I drive. When I drive by, you're like, oh my bad.
We've started catching some great rains.
I understand you drive up the hill.
I hope you got a little spot some, we should go out and work. Like we've got both the tasks and we can, uh, figure out what names.
Hey, Bradley, how are you?
No, I didn't do that. I listened nicely.
Good to see you.
I listened nicely like I'm supposed to.
No, it was yesterday.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, that's that's went all right now.
Kevin, do you wanna be on the front row? I can move my purse, you can sit next to me if you want.
No, I'm good.
You're so serious there, taking notes. Are you thinking?
Writing down my thoughts on doing interviews, we just.
I need, I need, this van is really smooth, like this one here.
Oh. Now, what were you doing this for? Who are you hiring?
It's just like a paper roll.
Oh. I got a, I got a massive fine last year, so I got hold of her this week.
And I'm. And her line down and she was very.
Not gonna tell her.
Uh, two.
I'm sure she's too long for me, but I don't know, I got the little one.
Get my office too, it's only been weeks, but they can't maybe lower it anymore.
Did he put the key on?
I mean.
Yeah, it's gonna be a trip. Oh, we did a while ago, but I need to move on, it's too good.
I think she was like, like, so she's like, over all the time. Like, yeah.
Okay.
And then the day, I don't know, other one that we did, the day of the fall.
I just felt.
Yes, sure, yeah, okay, the one, yeah.
Like, like maybe she can't remember what that was, listening to people?
Like. No, I.
I guess, I think I kind of felt your last, you know, like. Have you ever had a relationship, they're like, only two days. And you're just, yeah, only two days.
The other shelters?
Yeah. Did they get anything from other countries? Yeah, no doubt.
No, I actually, I didn't ask them. But, uh, I live, you think a grand fortune.
You're gonna have to.
Just fine, you think they're. For income, yeah, so.
I'm doing the paper by myself these days.
Right, yeah.
Which especially in the whole town, nobody else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put the console there?
Um, well, we just received authorization from our parents company that we can even hire somebody to replace.
Yeah, we have, and I think on top of that, our duty to do that.
They just watched the. It took them a whole month. To decide. I said.
We're we're here, we're here.
I said, well, either they're gonna have to authorize it or they're gonna have to pay for my freaking funeral. Or therapy, whichever comes first. I think it would be cheaper.
Five minutes.
More accurate, but is that allowed?
Yeah, yeah, we don't have a big plan.
You go out and you learn, and you really have like.
It's to go to the shelter to see what every little.
Why does he talk so much?
No, I just, I clicked and I go like, oh, nope.
Then 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 fast forward.
Oh, you know, oh, I went to.
The twenty twenty thirty six. Wouldn't, don't you wish you could do that in real life? Just fast forward it right. Anything that they say, mute. They couldn't pull out any. They started changing, I don't know. Start to start in the.
Yeah, but do you know who this is? No.
Mr. Charlie?
Yeah, um, so maybe a designation of if voting members, I haven't talked, something about voting members, so I'd be curious to see what's on there. And I wish it was.
Who's that meeting? Almost like forum. Are you? Are you, are you working over and sitting down tonight?
Who can be out here tonight?
That's.
Somebody's gonna be out here, that was why.
Right, we want.
Oh, yeah. So it's not that today.
Well, your daughter, I don't know, I didn't ask you.
I think about getting my plumber going.
Just just. I really, we were seeing.
I just wrote. Preparedness is my main aim.
I had to go watch it, I mean, okay.
Face but. But before I come there. Or this school's gonna be.
I mean, or really, or is it?
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did.
You did not, you're just like. Thank you very much, fully damn good.
You had mentioned it.
I'm gonna shoot you there.
You had mentioned it, these, uh, name of both companies, they're in conference, then with the stock, we have the more capable of. Looking at how much each parcel in the county produces on on property tax and proportionally associated with it. So I wanted to know.
You just expect that.
If we look at the county, they like the digital plan. Where you have a part of that, you can see where you would use it dollars or we have that for dollars. On stroke better versus.
But it was good.
There's wasted.
When is the, the, uh.
Ted turn?
Turn, I don't want to live.
Mid May, we're in March.
No way.
Why, why?
Always a question.
Now.
Just to figure out.
Weird weather.
I already told you, it's available, it's in rest.
We have a question, is nights in a row, is there a big arms shelter or school without?
Okay. Okay, there is.
The only alternative is a warning, it's next to us.
That's the one's been spotted.
Right, if they're finally spotted or somebody has spotted you and we're in a warning, then I'll call someone over here.
I think every month with Kevin, I always had to figure out something else. And tonight we was like, no, we're like, well, turn it off.
And then here's this one, crazy weather. Yes, no, it really is.
I think it's a little bit of, the hurricane's just pushed all this.
All these.
I meant to, I meant to email you. Really? That's a, I have to say a proper thing.
Mark, it isn't silent.
Yes, I'm in a national war.
Is that on purpose or what? I mean, it won't have a quick control. They still want you there. I, my new phone is. No, I can just provide the candy and and drag the float.
Seven point one?
Sounds like that.
Well, it's small town, all the parents have to pitch in and do some stuff.
If you're like, oh, no, because of case.
I kind of.
Oh, yeah, I'm still trying to lose this. I grew up that way too, my dad was a man that drove in high school. Oh, so whenever we had a play, we helped build sets, you know, all that stuff, whenever we had a concert, we'd say.
With him once.
Yeah, you know.
Kids are only young ones, you gotta.
Oh, yeah.
I think I shut this one off yet. Cause when it will rain.
Isn't there a beep for that?
They start doing mines, rainwater making. I don't know, mine's never rained or anything.
Smart.
I'm sorry, that's hard. That would probably be my life.
Are they aware of this, once we know we're safe?
I'll just have to run downstairs, but.
You had to run or?
Or walk, I mean, I don't run either.
Just don't take the elevator.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's walking this?
Second, motion in the second. All in favor, signify by the same eye.
Aye.
Aye, force same sign, in motion carry. Approval of the agenda. Formula for. Motion in the second to approve the agenda as listed, all in favor, signify by the same eye, aye, force same sign, in motion carry. More central planning, Sandy.
Hello. Um, we have received an application for a community development, block grant, community development loan fund, loan. Um, it's similar to the C D G projects that we normally do, we need a fiscal agent being either the county or a city, and since this is located outside the city limits, it would be a county project. I provided a project description to Candy to share with you and the first page of the final application. And did we have a map in there too, Candy?
Yep.
Okay, okay, uh, it's located out on Highway Two, west of town. On the second page of the packet, there was the first page of the final application, they showed the breakdown, the total project is four hundred and forty seven thousand. If you can see under the box number seven, proposed funding. It shows C D G of hundred and fifty thousand, that is the request to our loan fund. And then, uh, hundred and sixty two thousand, that would be the amount provided by the participating bank, and a hundred and twenty five thousand in other funds is the owner equity. It's located where the old schoolhouse is, west of town, that was recently purchased. And what they'll be doing is putting in a resort with, um, cabin rentals, a shop residence, retail store, bait shop, fish cleaning station, and a laundry facility. So the total project is four hundred and forty seven thousand, and they will be doing year round rentals, um, ice fishing, guiding, ice fishing rentals, um, of fish houses and, um, cabin rentals, so.
So it'll be a, a bait shop, convenience store, cabin rentals.
Yes. This is a project that has bank approval, and we will have, um, it goes in front of our board on Thursday.
What board on Thursday?
Our central planning council, our loan committee.
And we're just a pass through agency?
You are a pass through, yep. Yep, we have a C D G account already established with the county, we have done block grants with the county, so, um, the money just comes in and we do all of the administration. There's, other than signing the application, there really isn't anything that comes back on the county, we take care of everything.
Can we ask who this is?
Candy. What's that?
Can we ask who this is?
Sure, his name is Chad Pettit.
Okay. Is it just says the first two?
Yes, it does, yes. Chad Pettit. Any other questions?
How, oh, go ahead, tell me. How does the, I, I, I'm not familiar with how the, the loan process or how the, how does your fund work out of central planning?
Sure, these are actually HUD funds that come into the state through the Department of Commerce, and then we're allocated so much of those funds through, for each region as loan funds. Um, but it's considered a grant to the county, and it gets loaned out, but the loan funds, when they come back in, they do go back to the Department of Commerce, and they revolve, they go back into our revolving loan.
So as the funds go out, do they get paid back immediately as a portion of the, portion of the, uh?
Yes, the, the loan is amortized out, it's, uh, yeah.
Okay. I was just curious if it works, like similar to the, a flex funding or how exactly it would be?
Um, well.
But if, if they're paying right away, then it's different than flex funding?
Yes, yeah, no, it's just an outright loan through our fund, and we're participating with the bank, participating part of the project with this program.
Sandy, uh, are there any issues with respect to this project that, that you could see coming down the pipe that you feel, you know, might be appropriate for us to know, or does it meet all of your specs and standards?
No, we have done an environmental, it's still in the thirty day comment period, but we have received back half of our letters that we've sent out with no comment, no issue. And, um, it is in a five hundred year flood plain, but the elevation is such that Kristen has, um, issued a flim, a permit, yeah.
Elevation, they're all in good standing, um, and also the state water commissioner approved their permit as well, so everything on that end, um.
What is, what is that elevation up there?
It varies between fourteen sixty and fourteen sixty seven.
Okay.
So it's well above where it needs to be.
Because they need that sixty elevation for the sewer set.
Yes, sewer, yes, for building, uh, out there would be fourteen fifty two, um, but for any sewer septic system, it would be fourteen sixty, so everything, everything is good there for all their water hookups, their sewer systems, um, along with laundry hookups and everything.
I think there's a small portion that has to be rezoned through the township, uh, commercial, from egg to commercial. Um, part of the, part of the property is, is commercial now.
Two acres are zoned commercial, and the forty nine point eight are zoned this far.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think he was looking at having three acres or something of that nature, um, zoned commercial, so. And then they, I think the township is having their hearing on the twenty fifth of September for that.
Okay.
So.
Provided that it meets all of your standards, uh, and that it doesn't raise any flags with you or with anybody else required for approval, I'd make the motion and I'd be accept.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Yeah. I'll say.
Motion in second. Hold on, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Mike Fine?
Aye.
Brill?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Pauls?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
And Candy has the full application for signatures.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Bill Oker.
Hey, you got it right. I'm Bill Oker, I'm a area amateur radio operator, I actually live up by Cathay. Um, but, uh, as part of our mandate or strong suggestion from the FCC in return for the frequencies we're allocated for our hobby, we do, uh, uh, emergency preparedness. We take care of a lot of places, you'll notice when there's a real disaster, the first information that comes out is from amateur radio operators. As things start restoring, amateur radio operators tend to start handling health and welfare traffic that offloads the rest of the system. Uh, towards that end, locally, uh, the amateurs for years have had a amateur radio repeater in the basement of the courthouse here with an antenna, um, up on the roof. And, uh, this is, you know, technology that's served us well for about twenty years, but as with everything, computers are starting to invade our hobby pretty heavily. And there's a new technology, uh, within the last ten years or so, uh, that's called Internet repeater linking project. And, uh, this is a system of around fifteen hundred repeaters across the world that are hooked by internet. Uh, locally, uh, for years, we've had a system we call the super link that has used radio to internet, interconnect some of our repeaters. Um, Devil's Lake repeater has been one of those, uh, it's fallen into some disrepair as we've looked at, uh, updating and replacing things associated with that. It has made sense to do this new technology. Um, this will allow three things for us locally, uh, uh, there's several repeaters in the general area that will be hot linked together, what happens on one will happen on all of them. Uh, the, uh, super link I talked about just a bit ago will be, uh, freshened up and, uh, made working better, and one of the things associated with that is each of the weather service offices in the state actually has a position where local amateurs go operate, and we do a lot of, uh, weather spotting for them. And the third thing is the connection in the I R L P that I just described. Um, in order to make this project move forward, I contacted a local amateur, Daniel Ken Larson, who in turn, uh, contacted Kristen, who suggested we get on your meeting agenda for, I believe is a fairly straightforward request. Namely, we need access to the internet in the courthouse here in order to hook the repeater in. There are some, uh, specific requirements on it that I can work with your, uh, I T folk on to make sure it's done in a safe manner, but, uh, that's the request. Any questions?
Kind of bandwidth does this use?
It's, when it's actually doing something, it's about eight K bits per second. Um, where, where I'm from, uh, Daktel actually donated a, uh, Wi-Fi link from a facility they had up on Oxness, which is where we have our repeater. And they donated their, their minimum service, which is about a megabit, and, uh, I figure it would handle forty of these at a time.
Right, oh, so it's not, it's not.
No, it is, it's not, it's nothing impactful.
Is Steve available?
He's not there.
Okay.
Have, have we talked to Steve about this, Kristen, at all?
No, I wanted, I wanted it to be brought forth to you as a board, um, so you're well aware of the request, and I think he put it much more eloquently than I would have to you, so. So I'm glad he came.
We have that separate D S L line that you and I and.
Yes.
Water Board and I think Abstract maybe is on.
No, uh.
Not Abstract?
Uh, Veteran Services.
Veteran Services.
I don't know that he's on it anymore.
That's off the.
Okay.
It's not on the county system.
Yeah, he's on a different one now.
Well, he's on a different one himself, so, you know, that was something that Kristen's predecessor had as a, as a backup to the state system. That would be less security involved than, than, than to the county's network system. You know, and I think there's plenty of bandwidth on it because it's a fast connection.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I mean, I, I think, I think it's a fine idea, I would just wanna make sure that the I T person is content with it, you know.
I'm sure he's all right with it, yeah.
Yeah. So.
Maybe we could set up a conference call with Steve Thursday afternoon, Friday when he's back in between.
Uh, Thursday, I am actually traveling Friday would be fine.
Friday would be okay?
Yes.
Um, I have Bill's contact information downstairs in the office, so when Steve is back, if, if it's an okay request, I'll set up a conference call with he and I and Bill, and then we can discuss that, and then, um, I can bring that back to your next meeting.
Is that soon enough?
Oh, yes, uh, this is, uh, there's equipment to be built and, uh, and so, yes, it's.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds very good.
Yeah, then just let us know what the results of that conference call are.
Yeah, it's a very workable solution.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And with your permission, I would take off because I.
We may need your services as a weather spotter.
Run. Actually, there was one of the clubs had a T-shirt that said, I'm a weather spotter, if you see me running, try to keep on. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly.
Laura.
Hi.
Oh, I did write a letter up request, uh, I believe you got it back on, uh, regarding, uh, the question to be, to be to the annual budget, um, at five thousand dollars. Uh, we just opened our state shelter in April, uh, and from then until now, I don't think we anticipated the amount of, of, of services that we were going to be giving once the shelter was open. Uh, we had anticipated that the shelter would, uh, reopen approximately thirty to forty percent of the, of the year, it has now been open consistently since April. So it is going to go beyond the budget that we had, we had planned for.
You have your budget in there?
No, I just put the daily cost at the shelter.
Yeah.
Um, the other, uh, report that I gave you is the report that we give to the, uh, attorney general office for one of our grants, and those are the numbers, our stats from January up until June thirtieth of this year. Um, if you see on page three that we have, uh, we have served forty five individuals so far, and then on page five, uh, we have served thirty six just in our shelter.
Working out quite well then.
Yes, yes.
But, quite expensive.
Yes, it is, it's quite expensive.
This five hundred and sixteen dollars a day, that's every day of the year now we're talking?
Yes.
Real?
Yes.
What's your total budget, do you have a rough idea?
Um, I was just doing the numbers this afternoon, uh, our budget is approximately at two hundred and sixty four thousand a year, and that's including, uh, house rent salary at, uh, two hundred and sixty five days, twenty four hours.
Are you gonna be able to, have enough money for your budget?
We're still working, we're just, we're working on it and.
What are your other funding sources, Molly?
Right now, we, um, we do have, uh, a lot of state grants, local grant, the federal families, uh, violence prevention grants that are, they're all through the state. Um, we have, I've gotten permission from the board to hire, uh, a grant writer that can go after federal grants, because our clientele is approximately seventy to eighty percent Native American, which would then, uh, places, uh, eligible for federal grants. Uh, so we would be competing with the tribes.
You think you can compete with them, even though you're.
Well, right now, um, no, um, yeah, actually, because, uh, right now we serve Spirit Lake as well, we, we have a relationship with Spirit Lake, they utilize our shelter, um, because they don't have one, but they're on the reservation.
Molly, I have a couple of things, two things.
Um, we just had asked about funding that we've served seven counties, and all of the counties are being approached. Molly was at the anytime commission this morning, and one of our other board members, Jamie Tennyson, who's actually state's attorney, was up in Nelson County. Um, we knew when we moved, when we had to move out of the former shelter, the former nun's residence by the hospital because of this vast disconcern. And we estimated when we built the new shelter that there would be about thirty to forty percent more occupancy, and we're running more at like sixty percent occupancy on it. There's only been two days since April that we haven't had someone in shelter. We also met with the Spirit Lake Tribal Council, because the type of funding they receive, because they don't have a shelter, they pay for two nights in a hotel at some place. And after that, their director, uh, Imogen Freely admits that they refer their clients to us. So, um, that Molly has an appointment with their director on Monday to look at setting up a memorandum of agreement that's some of the funding that they're eligible for, that we would bill them for these day to day expenses. And some of the expenses that you see, such as the counselor, which is quite expensive, we can receive, and we do receive grants that are dedicated to that, for salaries for advocates who go with the client to court, for example, help them set up appointments, or for the therapists. But they're dedicated line items, we can't use those dollars to pay for the electricity, we can't use those dollars to pay for the garbage service. So it's the day to day bricks and mortar kind of thing, that yes, we estimated some for, but unfortunately, the need is greater than we thought.
So what, what kind of shortfall are we expecting?
We really don't know, no, that part, we do know that when we looked at each of the seven counties, that if between the seven of them, we could pull in about thirty thousand dollars, that would make a significant difference. We also have an issue too, with the federal funds coming in, we're not getting reimbursed as quickly because of all the changes on the federal level. We used to be turned around and have reimbursement within just a couple of weeks, and now we've been waiting up to six weeks, which makes cash flow really interesting sometimes. A couple of other things that we could point, ain't out as fundraiser. Couple of other things that we could point, ain't out as fundraisers, who's our state fry, Chairman?
No, we've got one coming up. We've got a state fry on Friday night. We've got another fundraiser October nineteenth in the Memorial Building here. We've had four or five during the year, you know, trying to get enough funds to, you know, keep going. And as you all know, the, you know, the government, they cut back about thirty percent. And we're grant, we get grants, so our grants are severely cut. Between that and then the extra people that, you know, we're serving, you know, we're just, we're above water, but not much.
We should also introduce the man that lives down the way of our board members. There's a total of nine people on the board, all very active. We have three different fundraisers planned for in October, which is domestic violence month. But one of the things with funding that would help a great deal is consistency. Again, because of cuts from the federal government. But if each of the counties could work us into their budget for whatever amount, we were looking at five thousand dollars as suggested among from Ramsey County, we would know we would always have that. And there are many occasions for grants where we can then put in, do you have matching funds? Do you have partners? Hey, got a whole room for partners here. So just some warning for them.
You talked about your shortfall. It's going to be pretty severe by the end of next April, when you run a year. Yep.
By the end of this year.
End of this year, that's your budget cycle?
Yeah, because we're really watching a lot of the grants. We won't know if we're reauthorized or if Spirit Lake is reauthorized by October first. If they're not reauthorized on some of theirs, they don't have anything to share with us.
I sure appreciate you coming in, giving us information. You know, we got the letter and then we wanted more information and thank you for that.
And we appreciated the money that you gave before when we were looking for matching funds to build the shelter. And we have literally talked several times about having an open house and having all the stakeholders come. We've never had an empty building, so I'm sorry.
You're serving the need then.
Oh, yes.
What did we get when you built?
Five thousand.
And we put in five thousand for our budget for next year. But I have a feeling that you're here tonight for maybe some of your shortfall between now and the end of the year. Is that correct?
If you wish to increase, that would be absolutely wonderful, but we definitely are looking for five thousand.
For next budget year?
Right, or for now. Right, just your financial.
Just, you've been here last month.
Yeah, I should have.
Oh, sorry.
We're working into the budget, I mean, we need to, but...
Just out of curiosity, how are your services utilized? I mean, what's the channel from, you know, the, well, when somebody needs the service, how are they placed essentially?
How are they contacted? Yeah, a majority of our referrals are coming from law enforcement. When they're on the scene or called to the scene of a domestic violence situation, they immediately contact us or they give the card to the victim. And usually, a majority of the time, it is law enforcement that's contacting us. We get referrals from social services. We also get referrals even from local people in stores. Just letting us know something occurred, giving the victim our phone number, and they are contacting us then.
And how many does this house hold?
It is a five-bedroom. We are using one of the rooms, those were an office. And so the four bedrooms are available. But we have been at full capacity and we have had people sitting on touch. We don't, we do not want to turn any... So how many people are in the shelter at any given time? Depends if it's a parent with children, they can be at their room together or a physical person.
You could have quite a number of people there.
We've had like up to nine, I think. We've had a value, yeah, of nine.
Like you said, I sure appreciate your information. Close your eyes.
If you have any questions and any concerns, please don't hesitate to contact us.
Is that something we want to look at our existing budget and see if there's any funds that we can pull up this year or...
Yes, we should definitely look at it. We're going to have quite a big shortfall by the end of the year, right?
Yes, and small and all of a sudden. And we've brainstormed a few ideas. If we do do what we need to do, then maybe we can't do seven days a week. We're going to have to do fewer days of operations.
The need is there.
All paths.
Basically, the only option is shut the doors the same way.
Yeah.
So we'd have a facility, but we couldn't lock the door.
Yeah, or we'd say we're at basically three out of four weeks or something.
You know, it's great that you provided the services. It's sad that we need that much of this service.
It just doesn't make any sense that if we spend the money to build the facility, you have the facility present and then not be able to utilize the facility because we can't keep the lights on.
So would we allocate out of the general if we're going to do it?
Can we, can you make an amendment or something? I'll make a motion to move five thousand dollars out of the general this year to contribute to the state office of funding.
Second. Here's a motion and a second.
One question, the original five that we talked about, did we put into the budget?
Would be for next year, right? I still want to keep the five in for next year, but I want to pull five out of the general for this year. I gave them five dollars so we can keep the lights on to the end of the year.
Motion, please.
Ruth?
Aye.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Grill?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I remember truly...
Thank you for the information.
If we could also suggest, if you ever have any contact with legislators and look at the Department of Human Services budget, this type of program is part of that budget. And all the oil changes that all filter down on it.
And again, you're having a state price Friday?
Friday night at law, yes.
Friday at law. And it's fifteen dollars a state, correct?
Yep. Starting at what time?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock at law this Friday.
Yep. And then on the nineteenth, we're having a fundraiser here in the Memorial Building. So come on, come on.
Yes, we could email that out too. We'll do that.
Sure. Just give her a hand and she'll send it over.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a story in the paper. I sent, I will send you a news release tomorrow or Friday, or Monday. I sent it to them to edit and then you'll get it tomorrow to your department.
Thank you all so much.
Have a good evening.
Kevin?
Not used to you being one little back.
I can move up a little.
I'm lonely.
I'm just, you're going to be better. Get my bowl of hair on camera.
You need to make up a particle view of Kevin or you guess you do it. You didn't do that in the particle viewer or Kevin?
Not right now.
Okay.
Updates on projects. Start off with Ramsey County Eight over by East Alon. That has been done now and gravelled, so that's finished. Any questions on that project? The gravel project on the Ramsey County, Cavalier County Line, the coast is going to start doing that tomorrow. It was going to start today, I'm surprised it didn't. And that should go fast. Don't have trucks in there banging on. It should be done until the week. Any questions on that? Well, I did drive across the Cavalier County side and they did gravel it. They put three inches of gravel on their side. We're doing five hundred yards, that's what they did, fifteen hundred yards, just a guess. So it costs three times the money we did. They also utilize their state funding on their side. Next project, the Royal Railroad Crossing. Nothing's changed there. That's scheduled for next week. About next week, but I haven't heard anything further on that. The roof on the Lake Region Heritage Center, that has certainly been a challenge. I thought why you put me in charge of that? They have been up there and looked at it. I was up there with them and saw the situation. And last I heard from the tech team is they were trying to see if their product will adhere to what's up there now, the rubber that's up there now. It's basically just a patch. It doesn't have to be replaced or it's basically a repair. So it's not going to be a big ticket, high dollar item. But they're trying to make sure that their product will move to what's up there now rather than have a mess show up. So that's why we're still waiting for an estimate. One of the leaks, the gutter, the rain gutter is up, of course, in the middle of the roof. And it has like sewer, like sewer line that goes up through the attic and then outside. Well, for some reason, one of those fittings cracked and then that's leaking. And that's probably a bigger concern also the roof, but the roof is leaking. So that has to be fixed.
So what you're saying is as long as we don't get any rain. We're in good shape.
So we are still waiting for an estimate there, but hopefully. They, they want to do it right, make sure it's going to work before they take on a project or a mission. The cove road, I didn't have it on my list, but we're meeting with the contractor. Well, they haven't set a date for this, tomorrow or Thursday. So that's going to be a pull, but we just don't know very... See, it's close to the end of the season, the fave. So we're going to push in a little bit. I'm hoping for a good one. Questions there? Okay, and then we've got a progressive estimate for Ramsey County Eight, East Webster. It was for the striping, the rubble strips and some sign. And that payment to mail is for the amount of fifty-one thousand eighty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. And the motion to pay that.
So, motion and a second. Go call please.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Grill?
Aye.
Ruth?
Aye.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye, motion carried.
That project isn't quite done yet. The rest of the bills are going to be considerably less than this one, but we're close. There's still some retaining that we have. So that's not the final bill I've got yet. The next project, Gowan Construction, they have that done now. They have it invoiced for that's a graveling on Ramsey Eight deal, East Alon. And that bill was for eighteen thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty cents.
Okay, for a second. Motion and a second.
Grill?
Aye.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Ruth?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye, motion carries.
And just for information, I think I sent the email out there. But I did put in the out of the paper for asking for quotes on fifteen-foot rotary battle force. And that will be open about October or September twenty-second at eleven o'clock.
Two months?
Two months. Then we'll trade two in.
How many more do we have?
We have three. One's kind of a spare. The city borrows it once in a while, but we ourselves also have to, it gets used.
The other ones you said are what, ten, twelve years old?
Yep, the oldest one, our spare is a nineteen ninety-six model. And the other two are two thousand and eight models. And we will take action until we get some kids on the list, so. I think it's very good to build fifty thousand, so we have to add, have it as a paper.
And the old ones you trade in?
Yep, we're going to trade two in. Heat one is a, that will use. Any more questions on? Papa Grove Township did give me the results of the traffic counts they did out there. They're listed there. I don't know if you all heard he goes out loud or... The one that we did the mag water on was that Howard Bait Road. And that's actually got the lowest traffic count mark, but... We put the magnitude for it down for like three, roughly three miles. Everybody, I think that was one thing we wanted them to give to us when we were talking to them about.
Traffic on it?
Yep. And our federal aid program sheet. We have to bring a copy of this or that's when we go to convention in October. And one change that I did see, we can put the military road. Next year, our project is to pave the military road, Ramsey County One, while I drive. And the terminal road out there by the elevator. And Ramsey County One and the military road are federal aid roads. So they will qualify for this federal aid funds. And if we add the military road to this program sheet, it would change the length. Well, it changes description a little, but it changes the length to four and three-quarters miles and estimated total cost at five hundred thousand. So that would be the only two changes I would see to this document. It's changing the length of the road, things we're adding, the military road, and then the estimated cost. Keep in mind that we're also doing the, while I drive, which is not a federal aid road, and the terminal road, which is not a federal aid road. So they're still part of the project, but they wouldn't be a part of the federal dollars, if that makes sense.
So on the sheet there, it's got a, the estimated total of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand change. And then it's got an allotment, so that means we've got two hundred thousand dollars of carryover from this, that's going to carry over into eighteen that we could use. So that four twenty-eight is the number that's available for usage then.
Yep, that's the way I read that, yep.
So by putting, putting military road on it, then we can utilize all those funds that are available to cost.
That would be used for that, yep.
And will we, by putting them on there, we're not obligated to?
No, just by me, that's just our... Your plan or whatever we're on, like we're committed.
I do like to borrow ahead too.
Yeah, we can borrow ahead for the next year if we like. So that, that allotment, is that fairly consistent, like two hundred and thirty thousand dollars or something?
It will be now with the new highway bill. So I don't know when the highway bill ends, but...
What we were at in the past?
Uh, maybe just slightly more than that, like two hundred and seventy, I believe, on the old highway bill.
So you think the new one will be more?
Uh, the one's less.
Less.
It's one of those...
Yeah, so it's two twenty-nine.
Right.
Or the old highway bill was two seventy for a year.
So do you need a motion to add military road or?
Uh, probably change this federal aid program sheet and decide. I think the motion is decided for sure.
Do we still find, leaving that, that's the Morris Township Bridge, correct?
It is, and we, you know, I would do that just like it is. We don't have an estimate there or anything. And it's twenty nineteen, and we might get it done before then, but if we do, we just take it off then. But as long as we leave it on there, they still keep it in their mind out there.
I'd make that motion. Second. First motion and a second. All in favor, signal by the same eye.
Aye.
Eye, both same side. And a motion carried.
Ask one more question, just on the, on the bridge one. Does it, to receive federal aid, does it have to hit under that spec for a certain quality of the rating and all that?
The ratings, the school bus route, distance to the next crossing, there's a whole bunch of that.
So we're not, we're not under the rating yet, correct? We talked about that in the past.
We are, we do meet the rating, but we do not meet the...
I mean, the other... Any of the other standards?
Right.
So even by leaving it on there, it doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna?
Exactly. In fact, there's a pretty little chance, because of the ultimate road is only two miles away here, it's, it's not far away.
The longest east to around it is six miles, so.
So if it's something we're gonna want to replace, we're gonna have to just do it ourselves?
That's the way it's looking, because, you know, there's other bridges throughout the state that we get their funding before we would.
You're looking at how much money there?
Our old estimate for the prefab bridge was a hundred and fifty-five thousand. And then, of course, it'd be some, a little bit of engineering and a little bit of crane rental, like, I figured thirty thousand. So we're looking at roughly a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
And we've got that budget for next year?
That's in the budget for next year. And we need, we need to get a new estimate for the bridge because it's, you know, it's ninety day estimate or something like that, so it's only good for ninety days.
The Northeast meeting, were they there?
Yep, they came and presented.
What did it look like?
Looks good.
Looks good, yeah. I mean, uh, uh, I think one thing that we should do previous month, but we're out of time to do it, but there are bridges in the area now that we're done, like, they're spot, Old County has like three or four of them. Uh, Stark County's done a few, uh, quite a few now. They said they're really happy with them and looks like a pretty good setup, to me, how they do it.
So they have some photos of them up in Botno?
Uh, yeah, they had photos of three different ones they've done across the state this year and how they installed them in the, it's it's pretty simple, it's been, it looks like a pretty good product, so.
Comes out in sections?
Yeah, it comes out in.
It comes out in, uh, the, the, the right length, okay, but there's like, as far as width, they come in sections.
Yeah, so like, we'd have, our, ours is an estimated twenty-four foot wide, so it would come out in eight foot sections.
Why?
Slices of the road, and then they would, and they put it together one on site.
Along?
This one's eighty, eighty-one or a odd number of eighty feet.
Looked up pretty good.
Pretty simple.
Pretty simple.
Yeah, they said like the one they put in at Botno, most of them now, they said if they put in, given a length like that, it's probably two, three days worth of work.
As long as you got the crane and.
As long as you got the crane, you got a little bit of experience, it'll probably take us longer than that, I'm sure.
Of course, yeah.
Well, you gotta do some repair work on the abutments too.
Yeah.
Yeah, the abutments are goofy like this, so we wanna put some, make sure they're up. Which is not a big deal, but we wanna make sure they're up. And that, that's included in my thirty thousand estimate.
The abutments will be cemented or?
Yeah, they're cemented now, but we put some kind of steel, uh, levelers, whatever you wanna call them.
Also there, they're just not perfectly leveled.
Right, it's staying close, I mean, it's really, really close, but you still wanna get.
One question I did ask them at the meeting was, you know, what kind of lifespan do they have? I mean, what's the oldest ones they have out there? They've been using these in Montana, I guess, for quite a while, I see the oldest ones they've got out there are thirty years plus. They've never had a problem with this one, so.
The salesmen told us.
Yeah, the salesman, obviously, but, but, uh, the oldest ones they got in North Dakota have been in for, you know, half dozen years now, so starting all these guts, they started, you know, using them during, uh, oil, I think, replacements. Look like a decent project.
Good. Should simplify that project, man.
Yeah, sweet things up, you know. They're rated for what the state requires, so they need the rating, like, they're not gonna be a low tonnage or anything like that.
For H L nine, you figure they didn't meet all the standards. The cost difference, obviously, between you and a prefab, uh, like that or even other bridges, it's substantial, so.
Townships are pretty up to speed on what's going on here?
Uh, kind of, but not really, I mean, they, they come to my office and ask me where we're at, but.
They know what we're gonna do.
Yeah, they're good. They're just, they're more curious as to when, or when it's gonna be done. They're gonna be twenty years, they're gonna be ten years, next year, you know?
Yeah, and I'm right next to it almost, so I know.
Yeah, right, right. That's good to hear.
So, so I've gotta keep them as much as I can.
That's good, that's good.
All right, any more questions on that? Um, just a reminder to end, Adam, that the private two corridor access plan meeting is set for September, did you get that?
I got it, you're in chief.
Perfect. At the DOT office?
Yep.
I don't know, do you want?
Next Tuesday.
Paul, say it on that, or this is kind of a planning preliminary, really early, I don't need him, but.
Sure.
Yeah, that's great.
Twenty-sixth of ten.
Do they have, uh, representatives in the township and everything, that are gonna be there as well?
Hmm, probably not this one. I mean, we could bring that up.
Something to bring up, I think, because, you know, if we're gonna be talking about order of plan, it's gonna come down to planning and zoning and finding roads and all those kind of things. The township has its own zone.
They'll be heavily impacted, yes.
Permission, I mean, this is just the first meeting of many.
Yep.
First thing I wanna do is start off thanking for the turning lanes. Wow, that's a huge improvement.
Yes, it is.
Especially they have them widened up.
Long.
The vines are very happy. I stopped there.
I mean, I can't conference all next week, sorry.
Pardon me?
I'm gonna be at a conference all next week.
So keep in the loop, this is really, this is our first meeting of many, so.
I talked to folks yesterday on the small two, so.
And then as long as we're on the state highway, the, the Starkweather shop, they've, they've been contacting me to see if we're interested in using that. Uh, you know, the legislative issue where they were gonna give up the three shops around the state, that's one of them. And I did make it over there, we can get our unit, our motorator in the door, but there's one of them radiant heaters that hangs down quite a bit below the door that would run into the wing, the, the machine itself would fit, but the wing, we had our wing on, I would not clear that. So I don't know, I don't know if it's something we're interested in or not. Along with that, though, you can do shop, that condemned. Mold, whatever, I'm not sure.
State, the state shop?
State highway shop. So they are using that Starkweather shop as their main can-do shop.
So what's their plan?
They have, they have, they planned to have that one tore down and new it up by this time next year. And that's when we would take what we're using in Starkweather. That's pretty aggressive, believe me, must be a prefab thing or something, I don't know, but whatever, that's what they're telling me.
We've got a place for parking in already, it's working fine.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, it would be nice and everything. And then they also offered us a truck to use, which I instructed, well, running their truck, you know, how that goes. If we were in a dire emergency, they could probably show us how to run their truck and we could get by, but.
They also want you to clean their roads?
Hmm, that did come up, I don't think that. You know, a good lead to that. So that's something to think about, we have at least, at least a year to think about if we wanna use their shop or not. And then one other thing, as long as their can-do shop was done, I thought maybe we could offer them a stall in Edmore. Just a thought thing though, I would think they would run their, their man out of there. That wouldn't part, be a part of the plan at all, but if they needed to thaw something out, maybe we could offer one stall out of our Edmore shop. Anything else, you'll run that by you guys before I offer it to them, but.
Where's their next, up at Edmore, where's their next building?
I've been, I suppose.
Are they, are they got something out of you?
That'll be the Grand Forks district, so can-do, this is part of the can-do shop closed down thing. They have to rotate their trucks now out of Devil's Lake, you know, the Starkweather, just to get them thawed out after a storm. And it wouldn't be a hassle to us, other than cleaning the floor, and I'm not sure they would do that.
If you wanna deal with it, I mean. Yeah, if we've got an extra stall, I think it's reasonable.
I think it's, it's good for, it's, it's.
Good neighbors, is that what you said?
They're in a bind, I mean, that's gonna be a neat situation, uh.
It's gonna help them get roads cleaned soon, our state highways, too, by the way.
And I have one other thing, I need to order some culverts, so I'm getting low on culverts and probably last load, we'll need this here, but the low-end culverts for a little bit of work is gonna cost seventeen thousand seven hundred eighty and fifty-one cents. Would you approve this?
Yeah. Motion in a second. Roll call please.
Ruth?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lightman?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
That's all I have, one second for me.
Thank you. Unfinished business, road code, code road agreement.
We should all have copies. Um, the only thing that I would point out is, is it one Ramsey County Commission member or two Ramsey County Commission members, number one? Um, number two, so there's gonna be a designation of voting and non-voting members that are on that committee. And then specifically the word maintenance, um, what does maintenance mean to everyone? Kevin and I were having a discussion about that, does maintenance mean snow removal? What does it mean? So I think there needs to be clear definitions on what the agreement is that the county's willing to enter into so that I can make sure the terms are appropriate in there. And Kevin can maybe shed some light on, you know, what he was considering. He had put a notation that snow removal is something else.
Repairs or sanding or stuff like that, I don't know if we wanna be even responsible for it. They, in the past, they have made their own judgment as to when it needs it, you know, when they pay for it. So I don't know if we wanna start doing that type of maintenance, is my opinion.
Are we all that way for the understanding on regular basis?
We do go that way for snow removal, but not for sanding, that's kind of a special. We do the terminal road, but that's on Highway Two, and this is on Highway Nineteen.
Did we want the, are we superintendent and a voting member or?
Well, that was my, yeah, that was my question, because is, is the highway superintendent a voting member or is he basically there, you know, ex officio, just a guy now for, you know?
Advice.
Advice, counsel, you know? To me, I, I think when we discussed it with the townships, the original agreement sounded to me like it was one from each of the townships, one county commissioner, Kevin sits in to, you know, for budgetary questions, ideas, will it fit in next year, will it fit in next year, and those kind of things? And if it comes down to vote, then the three people that would vote would be there. I, I don't foresee it being a problem, obviously, but, you know, if this is in perpetuity, twenty years from now, you have no idea who's gonna be making the decision that we're able, so.
And I guess, do you see my email? I, just for information on our other road agreements, they, they don't actually vote, everybody has to agree to the project, okay? Because if there's one entity that can't afford it, let's say, and the other two votes are in favor of building a project, then who's gonna disagree with their percentage?
I mean, that's, that's a fair understanding too, you know?
Well.
I guess the way we do it, yeah, is everybody has to agree.
I think that's fair. Just the way it goes. Yeah, unanimously agreeant to.
I think it does add in there.
Yep.
Take the, uh, highway superintendent out as a voting member?
Well, right now it's just vague, so I can specify behind highway superintendent position, not voting. And then, um, come down this agreement.
I, I also think that with respect to, uh, the last line, disagreement will be reviewed upon the request of the county or townships involved. I think it might be beneficial to include a clause in that, uh, to say disagreement will be reviewed and open to amendment based on a vote of each constituent member board. Just, just so that you make explicit that this is not binding, because review amendment, the different.
So that's fine, that covers the future boards, we should, you know?
Do we wanna delineate what maintenance is then? Think that makes sense?
I would delineate.
Yeah.
How about sandy, you and Julie? Hard to say.
We don't, it depends on the season.
Well, what do they do now? Do they sand it now or who does it?
Yeah, we do a form, especially that curve, that curve gets slippery and then the intersection on the highway. But, uh, the, the motel, uh, the resort down there usually requests it because they have a majority of traffic down there all the time. And a lot of times he's paid for it himself.
Pardon me?
The, the resort owner has paid for it, so, so.
Well, I guess, off of the intent of when we talked with the townships, I think routine, day-to-day stuff was going to still be their cost, kind of how I understood it, I guess, but.
There's, haven't set up no meetings, so. I think that's one thing that should be covered in the first meeting. See where they wanna do, see what the townships are gonna do.
I, I think we should spell it out, uh, what we think maintenance is, and then at the first meeting, they can say, uh, we didn't understand it that way or something like that.
That's all, so.
Well, you and, you and Carrie distinguish that maintenance is? Like, chip sealing is considered maintenance, so if you got us on, I'll put the maintenance, I get that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess my consideration was any kind of pavement upkeep and maintenance. Just, you know, crack sealing, chip sealing, uh, if there's a pothole, you know, those kind of things. An overlay and a spock or something, you know, that's what my understanding was, I guess, maybe their understanding was.
We say extraordinary and non-routine maintenance, right, where?
That's the lawyer.
Kevin and I'll have a conference, they don't like that.
That's a really good idea.
You know our intent, so you guys can hammer it up and put it down.
Yep.
And then we'll see if the town, if the townships were thinking the same as we were, I guess.
You're gonna go as far as to stop the interval or the schedule?
Oh, maintenance, crack sealing.
Crack sealing.
I think when we review it every year at budget time, that's when we'll say, okay, it needs to be cracked sealed or it needs to be potholed or.
Yeah, and that's what's kind of my intent with the thought process of the committee, is then all three entities will get together once a year, they'll say, okay, what's our five-year plan? Develop, you know, change it as it goes ahead, and then the townships and ourselves can plan for it accordingly.
I don't think the townships could do regular work, kind of, or.
I think it's good.
It's good start.
Okay, so just to clarify, the two changes that we're looking to make is to make the highway department superintendent and, uh, non-voting ex officio member, uh, and to amend the last clause of the document to include the ability to amend disagreement.
That and you have a disconsent? So the three cherry trees.
Then we'll spell out what maintenance means for, for something, describe it something, okay?
Do you mean a motion to approve that then, or is this?
Yeah.
Move to approve?
Second? Second?
As amended?
As amended.
All in favor, signal have the same eye?
Aye.
Eye.
Both same sign? And motion carried. Discussion on monthly rule. Thank you all, your writers.
And to clarify also, on this particular topic, I think, uh, with the constitution, the state constitution says that this is, this would be the last meeting, uh, before the sixty days would be up, but we have to appoint a board by this meeting, right?
Well.
Yeah, we, I think it says in the century code, you have sixty days after you agree to establish and we'll charge to appoint out of the board, is that right? So this is sixty days already?
We think the last meeting.
August fifteenth, I think, was the last, and then one came up.
Okay, so we do it when? I'm sorry.
August fifteenth.
So we've done until essentially the first meeting in October.
You're, you're kinda right, so it came up, but then there'd be the motion at the next meeting, so.
Okay.
We didn't advertise it till the next one.
Yeah, we made a motion to.
But, 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 yeah, but the.
Just, just to make sure that we're not on the wrong side of century code, it's a good question.
That would be a, a good way to start off a meeting.
Right.
That's a good question.
This first came on, on August fifteenth, was that correct? When you made your motion for it, initially?
I, I, I refer to.
I'll look at the minutes.
As far as the, that, well, the minutes.
We talked about the end of the meeting, correct? Well, it would have been, it was at a five-thirty meeting, so it would have been the second meeting of the month.
That's exactly, I'm talking budget, I want to get it through the budget, then that's.
That's right, but, but, but it, I think, based on my interpretation of century code, and I'll leave it to the states to make, to make the final distinction on that, uh, but it would be, the, the clock started when we made the motion, when we approved the motion, not when we advertised, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I, that is the interpretation, but I thought you made the motion at the August fifteenth.
I, I. Well, that, that makes me sure.
I think it's the August fifteenth meeting, because I'm looking at the minutes.
Motion was made by Commissioner Wakefield, said invite Michelle Liphon to approve for her membership. And the next sixty days discuss the option of a new charter, that's August fifteenth.
Okay.
So we're doing more than that?
So that's, that's the nine and the one minutes, then, so we did it on the fifteenth of August?
Correct, we did the fifteenth minutes.
Okay, so we got sixty days from the fifteenth, then?
Yep.
Okay, so we're okay still then?
Correct.
So we're thirty-five days out today then? Yeah, so we'd have to have a decision made either at the first meeting in October or at the latest, that Friday before our second meeting, because our second meeting would be the sixty-third day. It'd be nine times seven.
Say the first meeting and not get all done.
Says days, yeah.
Six days.
There's no discussion.
Probably not, have any discussion, are we waiting, are we all over, or we should wait till we have? Yeah, I think that that's fine, I guess.
Well, how many, how many people that we have that are interested, that's fine.
Right now, three.
Three, correct? And we need five. I think we'd be, yeah, I think it'd be good to wait until we got everybody that's interested and, uh, and then take a determination.
Yeah, and well, and I'm, and I'm sorry for, for crying wolf, uh, with respect to, I thought this was the last meeting.
The last one. It was on play.
Okay, so we've gotta make this decision by the next meeting.
Yeah.
And how long are we advertising for? Are we still advertising, are we done advertising?
I did it, um, three advertisements and the last one was yesterday.
Is it on our social media?
Facebook, website.
Okay. Would you move us to advertise more or do you think that's enough? I mean, if we're gonna wait until the first meeting in October, it's essentially three weeks from now, so probably it'd be bad to put it out there a few more times.
What's that ad cost?
I've forgotten, Billy.
Three.
Louise might.
Yeah.
I don't do ads. I know nothing.
Can you put it in here, are you going to?
Pardon me?
Can you put, are you still ever looking for a member for the whole mall?
That's gonna cost way more.
He's five. Are you doing a big one?
So we've advertised three times, right? So once a week we're advertising, or what?
Um. Almost, well, since they changed their rules at paper.
I promise.
Things, things have to be there two days prior to publication, yes.
Oh, okay.
So. Um, if I was to do it tomorrow, it would get in till probably Monday, right?
So, in all honesty, yeah, we've only got about a week, because it's the Tuesday following already, right? Because we're in October, yeah, I think then one more time is probably adequate.
I, I mean, I probably could get it in twice.
Twice next week.
And I always do the Friday paper because that's what they told me was the most, most odd.
Oh, okay, well, then I'll, I'll make a motion we have to price to another one.
Okay.
There's a motion, is there a second?
That's second, so.
All in favor, signal have the same, that's enough. All in favor, signal have the same, eye.
Eye.
Both same sign, be then motion carried.
Discussion on human resource.
Box.
Thank you, lady.
Thank you.
Just for a question, did you pick a candidate or still?
We're about to.
We're going here.
Never be the intent.
We're counting two.
I like your joke.
Did you get a lot of interest in it? We have three candidates, one withdrew, to interview two today. I think, uh, my, my feelings and thoughts on the subject have not changed in the, uh, intervening hours. Uh, I still think that, uh, while both candidates, uh, you know, it show potential to be qualified to fill that position, but I still feel that Crystal Biggs, uh, given her experience, given, uh, you know, the, the resume that she comes along with, and given her performance and answers to our questions in the interview, would be the, uh, more appropriate candidate for Ramsey County.
You couldn't add in the form of a motion?
Yep, I would like to make a motion to extend an offer for a part-time human resources position for Ramsey County to Crystal Biggs, with an onsite requirement of eight hours per week, hours, uh, to be divided at her discretion, but to be standardized so that everyone may be aware, uh, that is an employee in this county, uh, and four hours per week, uh, either onsite or offsite, but available for contact or assignment, uh, at the discretion of the employees of the commission. Uh, further make a motion that we offer her a salary of thirty dollars per hour, and that this offer would be contingent upon her passing a background check and upon due consideration of, uh, the statements of her references.
You get that again?
I have to hand that over.
Yeah.
Yeah, you sound like shorthand right now.
Those motions are second.
Second.
Roll call.
Britt?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Liphon?
Hi.
Wakefield?
Hi.
Is there a, yeah.
So can, um, Candy, you will reach out and?
I will do that.
Report back when you know?
Yes.
Can we put a timeline on how long we're giving it, or?
I guess it would have to be till next, next meeting.
You'd have to.
Yeah, or? She comes back with a calendar or something like that, or the top, unless we wanna get together before that, Candy, can just keep us in the loop, if we have to call a special group or something, we'll discuss it.
Okay, the discussion on twenty eighteen budget.
We can leave that to the last.
We should have done that first.
Okay, one wants it last, one wants it first, here we are.
We can leave it to the last.
Well, what is the, discuss at this point, we have to have a public hearing in the first meeting in October, correct?
October, the first meeting in October is you finalize the project.
But we, but we have, we have to hold a public hearing at that point, I guess.
Um, nothing, nothing has really been determined between Nelson, Benson County as far as.
The VSO.
VSO.
Do, do you know what their prelim budget dollars are for that position?
I, I, he, he didn't present anything to them.
He didn't?
Nothing.
That's not true.
Every, everything came here and when I reached out to them, they had nothing.
I would guess they probably won't.
So I scanned.
With the same thing in their preliminary, what they have.
So I scanned everything that I had and sent to them so that they could have for their, just, you know, to put in part of their preliminary budget.
Uh, when, when was this, before they approved their prelims? Okay. I think it would be, uh, prudent to email them again and see if that's what they forget, so we know where we're sitting, at least before the first meeting in October.
You know.
And then we, we can adjust it accordingly, or whatever we have to do.
You know, and the agreements, I mean, I think should be, you know, should be looked at again. You know, or, or if one of them are not in, you know, that they don't wanna be part of it.
What, what, just, you emailed the, what the preliminary budget?
I, I scanned and emailed everything that he presented to us, to both counties.
So you got that to them, and they had that before they approved their preliminary?
I believe so. But what figures they put in there, because he did one, he did one with just him, and then he did another one with him and, you know,
another person.
Oh, that's weird. That's the thing, I guess, we didn't talk about is, you know, we didn't go on with it, he wanted the second person for the entire year, right?
Wanted one.
No.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's what he wanted, yes.
So what did, we, we put in our preliminary that?
I put the max.
Yeah, we didn't address that.
Just because nothing was, I mean, because you always go in with a high number for your preliminary and then you can cut it from there.
Yeah, my thought was not to put somebody in there for the entire year, second person. But, what did we talk about, three or four months of it out?
I think, I think three months would discuss at one point, maybe.
Right, well, I, I remember asking whether or not he felt he needed a whole year to bring somebody else up to speed.
But then the thing of it is, are the other two counties willing to pay that portion?
No, I, I don't know that, I, I believe that it's appropriate, I just, I just remember that discussion, I haven't happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're gonna have, they're gonna have their, um, that's where we need to, and it'd be nice if, if you could, once you find out, email it out to us to see what they stuck in their prelim budgets, because I'm sure at that point, the oldest will have an idea of what their thought process is. Might not be, I mean, do they, uh, first meeting in October, they both meet at eight AM?
I'm su- I'm sure.
So just in case we had any questions, we could conference with each other and, and get it straightened out, so we got it squared away. The other thing I would ask, and I don't recall, uh, when we did the agreement, were you state attorney at that point, already carried, correct? Or was Lonnie still?
No, I started in January.
Well, you, you asked, so it must have been in December when we did it, if we did it for this year, as you guys were sitting on the bench at that point. The only thing I would say is, I don't recall of how we put it in the agreement, but it might be beneficial, because we set it off of numbers of veterans possibly served per county, to look at the ratio again, uh, just to make sure that we're still in the ballpark, I mean, if we're close enough, we're close enough still.
Right, we, we.
I would assume that we're probably gonna take on, the ratio would probably mean we're gonna be taking on more, but I mean, just to be fair with the other counties, we should look at the ratio and make sure we got it squared away the same way it's coming.
And I think our timeline, you know, for the new director, you know, would be, uh, interviewed by the commission. And, yeah, it's only just that person, other commission. Because I'm sure commission wants to have an employee.
That's a whole, well, that's a whole nother question is, how, we're gonna have to talk with the other counties to determine how, if this is, I mean, it's a joint position on a joint payer, they don't wanna be involved in the hiring process. I mean, they have to have their say too, if that's how we're gonna do it.
We started that, let's say, in July, first place by first September, or the third of October, or, you know, whatever. Have to advertise for a period of time. Well, that's, you know, I would say how we have to handle that.
The H R person that do that.
Pardon me?
The H R person that do that.
Yeah, right, let's stick with that comment on.
Yeah, but we, but we still have to determine who's going to be making, who's gonna be in the room when the questions are asked, who's making the determination on the hire? And, you know, if, if.
That's not part of the agreement.
No, that was never put in the agreement, so I, I almost wonder if maybe we should just plan to have a conference with them so we can talk about these things before we, before we budget for it, so we all have an agreement on, are we gonna hire somebody, three months, six months, whatever we're gonna do, as well as when the time comes, how we plan on doing the hire.
We should send that information out to the counties so they can review it before we got a conference.
Yeah, I agree. Not that you don't have.
Maybe tell them or inform them on our timeline, what we're thinking. And I hope three months of the commission to have somebody in there, that's my thought.
Yeah, no, I think that that's a reasonable, you know, sure not speeding you forward.
Yeah, because, I mean, we have to, we have a timeline, like you said, so we have an idea of when we're gonna have to start advertising and look for somebody, and all that kind of stuff, too, so.
I get a lot of responses that people are using the veteran services and people, I remind people that are veterans. And in fact, I had one the other day, I said, have you been to see our veterans officer, and he said, no, I said, he didn't there because this gentleman has got some health problems or. Or, what did you know, all right, go.
Well, I've been, I've been consistently impressed with the numbers that since Stacy started reporting, how many people he was seeing, I mean, you're talking double digits per day, you average out.
Yes, he did. And, uh, I hope we can find somebody that will, you know, cover the bases that he does in the region.
I saw the, was there a time that I walked into the courthouse, and he's, his hours are here, where he's not talking to somebody, where there's somebody in there getting help?
The clearly, I've never been very helpful.
Criminal, you know, folks that have military backgrounds that, um, contacted court system, the court system has even referred down to him, and he's kind of gone above and beyond connecting with people with different labels, even to help with those things issues, so it is good.
Any other discussion?
Do we have to make a motion to set a hearing time?
I think we need to make a motion to extend an invitation that they join us on a conference call, right?
Well, I mean, I can.
Do we normally have that, that hearing the day that we approve?
Yes.
It's separate law.
Yeah, it's law.
There's a, I think, a nine o'clock, isn't it?
Yeah, nine or nine thirty.
Or this is a hell of a.
That's why, you know, hashing some of it out before him so that, you know, on that meeting day, you know what.
Well, then, do, in that case, do we need a, do we need a document explaining what our thought is and sign it and let them sign on to it too, so that we all know whether or not we're in agreement prior to that, is that?
I think before they.
Well, I, you know, he told us his intention is to retire, he hasn't turned anything in, so I think we're, if he said he was not gonna retire the other year, I guess we would probably say, okay. So what I'm trying to say then is, we can go on the premises that he's gonna retire and talk to the other counties in that, all that fact. And then carry on from there, if they've got enough money to cover their end of it, which I would guess they do.
Well, well, the problem with asking for them to make a commitment essentially previous to the next meeting is they don't have another word meeting, unless they had a special meeting to discuss it.
Well, no.
You know, so they can't make a decision unless it's in an open word meeting, so, uh, we pretty much don't have a choice at this point, I could be waiting till October third, but we can, we can have Candy talk to their officers, and then they can send, you know, at least ask them if that's okay that we have a conference call, I don't think that. But we can, we can have Candy talk to their officers and then they can send, you know, at least ask them if that's okay that we have a conference call, I don't think that.
It could be.
Could be what our thought process is and so that they don't walk into the conference call blind headed, but with you.
You know, or if they wouldn't have a conference call before that, you probably can only have a special meeting.
Yeah, and if, if, yeah, just convey what our thoughts are, if that's what their thought is, you can, if we actually get together, we're gonna get together, great answer.
Conversations, I have, I have two counties, not all their commissioners, but they're happy with it, I mean, they're, they're, uh, so. I think that won't be quite simple, I am, or all of them. Like the three month salary is, you know, might be an item, but I think if it's split three way, then the goal is like.
I think that's, that's fair.
Um, and as far as, you know, for next year, for say, you know, leaving, you know, leaving the five thousand dollars where it's at? Leaving everyone else's budget where it is, how it's presented.
Well, there's one thing we can decide on the next meeting, you know, that should be really important.
But as far as going up.
Can't, you can't the law.
It always costs that point.
No, we're not. What, where are we at on preliminary mills now versus?
Thanks to Kevin.
I heard you found some savings, so.
Yeah, yeah, we, we found a lot. Yeah, we're at a, yeah, so we don't have to do a publication.
So where are we at on local property tax levy from the counties asked there this year projected versus last year?
Um, that one, I, I dropped it down to forty one.
Maybe we were at what?
Like forty one point three four.
On what, no?
On the general.
On the general, but I understand, I mean, cause last year we levied right around six point one million dollars.
Right.
That actually came out, I mean, our total budget was thirteen and change.
Thirteen, thirteen million, and we're at like ten.
We're at ten something pounds, but, yeah, but we actually levied six point one million dollars that came from county residents on parcels last year. I just wanna know where we're at this year versus last year, cause that'll give us some clarification on if we're wanna, you know, find more savings or where we, you know, if we're comfortable where we're at.
Just where, just where everything kind of sits right now, you know, the, like, the airport asked for more, library asked for more. You know, so I put what their request is to cover, to cover that. Um, and then with Kevin cutting, um, like no mills, the road and bridge. Uh, where else do we cut, Kevin? Um. County road, we, like, he asked for ten and we cut it down to like five point nine seven.
But you still have money carry over from this year, next year, that just don't be comfortable, we carry over at the end of eighteen, yeah, we carry over, right?
It's kind of. Yeah.
So what's, what's our total dollar figure of the, well, what's our mill, I guess, hundred and, four hundred and five something?
Um, I suppose so, it's, it doesn't. It's maybe six point one. It's tough, you know, it doesn't mean, you don't, like. But I know our preliminary is like ten million.
Which is, you know, so I used to see them because of the federal pass through and everything.
Yeah. Because our taxable valuation increased by almost three million dollars. With all the new growth that we have. Property tax revenue, four point seven million. For property tax revenues, four point eight million.
Four point eight. What did you say, four point eight?
At the, at what mills I have figured right now, eighty six point four eight. So actually be, uh, eighty nine point two two. In the formula that they've given. Cause they're having me take the twenty mills off from county services to compare. I still don't agree with it, but, I don't know. Kevin got it to be zero.
Total general went up by twenty two thousand for the preliminary year, I guess. On the terminal, on the total highway was same.
Let's.
Total highway down about three hundred and fifty.
So the mills need to generate that four one eight nine, right?
And that's, you know, no dollars. For social services.
Yeah, okay, the only reason I'm asking is that, I shouldn't say one of my goals, but my thought process on it was is we wanted to try our best to mirror uh, savings this year as to the actual savings we receive from the social services buy down, cause that's the best we can do. The other end, you know, the twelve percent is out of our hands to a point, but we can try our best to try to make social saves, services savings, cause the twelve percent is across the board. And we're down then approximately one point three million, well, last year we spent county, county funds were one point three four two. And then we have, you know, the actual funds were about two million, but five hundred and twenty thousand came from the state, like, to buy down to that twenty. So we're pretty doggone close to keeping that that twenty million right now.
Yep.
Which is, that's pretty good considering we, we fit in raises and we fit in a bridge and we fit in a bunch of other, little smaller items and additional deputy and all those kinds of things, so I think we're at least in the ballpark.
I had bathing, Ramsay County one, and all those, that's in the budget.
Yeah, I think, I, you know, as a, as an estimate, I think we're pretty in shape for the fall.
And I guess it all depends too as board, what you, you know, like, for the library, you know, the, what they came in with, like, I took her max. You know, and I know that their ma, they can only do like three, three mills, I think. Like, at their max, and she's at like two point six five.
Six five?
Two point six five.
That's just a rural mill, correct? So it's about what, thirty seven thousand, something like that, um.
Yeah, cause I think she put in like a hundred and.
Yeah, it was a hundred and thirteen, maybe.
Hundred and eleven, yeah. You know, so. It's just something to, you know. It's just something to kind of follow. And all depending too what you, what you wanna do with the veteran service too, because I changed that mill to reflect, you know, to the, the max, yep.
The max. Because you have somebody in there for a full year, so there'll be a little bit of savings in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I pretty much, I pretty much took everybody's final numbers that they presented to us and figured the mills off of that.
County airport went up two mils? I mean, it's two mils, or, not one, two mils.
No, they, they were at two point nine four and they went up to three point oh eight.
Well, we usually tell them, you know, they're down bad.
They put the rural, rural mill on.
On sixteen, or, or, or.
How, how many more passengers did they need in order to get that?
About four thousand.
Yeah, I think they're on base to be at, what's, that, looking sixty five?
Close, close to, close to seven thousand, so.
Need to get to ten.
They need to get to ten, so. Maybe even headways are getting closer to it, and once they get that.
Well, I mean, maybe, maybe in order to help the, help the airport, we could just start having commission meetings in Maui.
We can only add five, cause they come both places, and it costs ten.
The tapes still on.
So it's just, it's just something to think about for the next, I mean.
Why they going up is, is they have another full-time fire personnel out there that have, they're not borrowing from the city fire department, which created a problem. And so now they have three full-time fire people out there that still they can only take those shifts, cause they have to have somebody on, onsite, on staff. When a plane comes in. So they have planes coming in at night, that creates a problem for staffing, so.
Yeah, it's like six in the morning.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the budget?
I think it's looking good.
Thank you, Kevin, we appreciate you cutting.
Yeah, you're not gonna, you're not, they're not gonna be too close then, on your carryovers and everything, should be okay?
Oh, it's all.
No.
Yeah, cause I mean, I don't wanna be this, I don't wanna be this too fannish.
There's only one car I gotta wash, I think, right in there.
Cause, you know. Yeah, we have to kind of think long term for positioning there, because after the nineteen session, we don't have a, all bets are off on state funding. Kind of think ahead a little bit.
New, new business.
Always say lodging, please, would you?
I'm gonna approve this.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Went from eighty one ninety to eighty three seventy.
Done the amount of voting?
I did.
All second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the rates. All in favor, signal five S and I.
Aye.
Aye, for same sign, being then motion carried.
This doesn't affect up to the first?
Uh, it's just lodging, not mileage.
Nope, just lodging. Yeah, mileage is usually the first thing here.
New business, approval of bills, L E C and N D S U extension service. Second, motion and a second.
Brown?
Aye.
Mike Wong?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Holson?
Aye, motion carried, approves Homestead credits. Move to a proof.
Aye.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signal five S and I.
Aye.
Aye, for same sign, being a motion carried. Visitors and delegations, that's you, Rodney.
Yeah, that was on the first, first part of the video.
There's one visitor delegation, announcements?
Um, I believe it's a point here, but, oh, just one thing. I, I think I need to formally apologize to everybody here, uh, in our last meeting, I didn't, uh, specify what was going on with the library. With the, but I, but I, I still.
I was telling you?
No, I knew what was going, I knew what was going on, but I didn't, I didn't want to, uh, I didn't want to say anything before the city, before the building authority did anything, because I didn't know what the situation was going to be with the building authority. Uh, so, I wasn't trying to withhold information, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys were all very.
Everybody. No, no second thoughts, um, and that's, uh, yeah, unfulfilling the situation, not.
Frustrating.
Yeah. I told Rachel, I think she's got one of the toughest jobs in the community, just trying to run something in there, you know.
Another announcement, oh, Rodney.
Say, I guess if the board would, I would, you could put my name in for that home rule, if the board feels that I would be of any beneficial to it otherwise. If you get more names than what you want, you can exclude my name, but I guess until that time comes.
I think you'd have, I think you'd have a lot to offer, Rodney.
Yes, thank you so much for your willingness to, to contribute, we'll take that into consideration.
I'm not that well versed on it, but I mean, I guess I'd have to do a little studying, but I guess I can.
I think we had a, a chamber meeting yesterday that was very good, very well received, a lot of good things going on at the chamber. They will have their annual meeting, uh, it's October eleventh. At eleven thirty at the college, so. I think we extended invitation to all the, all commissioners and.
Where are we at on the, on the downtown study coming back, I thought, the original timeline was sometime in October.
It's been delayed.
Delayed.
Due to unforeseen illness.
Oh.
Yeah, um, general.
Oh, okay, oh, that's, what do you mean about that?
But, but I think only until November first, is that right, Cap?
Okay, well, that's, that's go reasonable.
They will have some, uh, new board appointees for the chamber, um, Kerry is, his term is up, he'll be on the executive committee. And then, uh, Amber, um, will be leaving the chamber, she's moving. Yeah, Amber, uh.
Sam.
Sam, yeah, so.
Well, I should mention too, for the next meeting, so don't forget, um, we had a attendant care meeting, uh, last week. Uh, everything is going well there, um, uh, we looked at some, just some policy changes on who we could take and who we couldn't take coming into attendant care. It's being utilized fairly well, um, it's being utilized by other counties now too, uh, we had, I think, two or three other counties have utilized it for the past few months now, so. But we, we, and it was good, we, we had the, uh, Chief Knowski there as well as former interim chief Frank was with there as well. Uh, and talked about some of the, you know, just how we put youth in, how we pull them out, you know, in terms of release and things like that. Some little policy changes that help little streamline things, make things a little bit easier for the police department, things like that too, so, but overall, everything's going pretty well.
With respect to the search for library director, uh, it's unfortunate to say that the current library director's, uh, term, long term, not term. Employment will be lapsing at the end of this month, uh, as she moves down to Texas, uh, she will be greatly missed. Uh, but we have extended an offer for employment on three separate occasions now and have had that turned down three separate times. Uh, so the library has now spent over a thousand dollars on advertising and I think we've had a total of five applicants. Uh, so we have turned it over to contacting, uh, all of the universities that offer a masters of library science or any related degree to see if any of their graduates or anyone, uh, who may be qualified, would be willing to submit an application. Uh, and I encourage anyone here to, if you know anyone who might be qualified to run that position, I mean, it's, it's a big job and, and the library will be hurting if, uh, we don't fill it, so.
Have you guys discussed plans for if? Have you guys discussed plans or if you don't have anybody to fill it?
So we, uh, established another role of assistant director specifically to handle that so that, that the assistant director could act in the, in the faculties of a director, uh, until such time as a permanent director was hired. Uh, but yes, we clarified that structure just.
Okay, so somebody on staff now is capable.
That's right.
Well, that's correct, yes.
One other announcement, the Rotary Feat is Thursday, what do you think? Casey Hall. I think four to seven.
Go to the Rotary Feat on Thursday and go have steak on Friday.
Got to drink up or?
We need a workout on Saturday.
Ew. That's asking a lot.
Any other announcements? Motion Twitter?
Planning and zoning is coming along, uh, including, you know. I met with, met with Joel last week and he gave me a preliminary document. And he's gonna email that out to planning commission committee members, what he gave me. And then, uh, we will have a planning committee meeting coming up in October. And then we'll have a public hearing to go through what comes out of there, approve that. And then, once, once that, uh, public hearing is done, then we'll come to the commission for approval. So we're looking at probably first part of November with the finished document, cross our fingers, kind of thing. And I believe you're on that planning commission.
Am I?
I, I, I think so. I, yeah, I carried her, the board appointments after, maybe the first year, kind of thing, but, um. So we'll, we'll get that to you, get that to the other commissioners, just so you're not surprised by anything, you can make a public comment. And then we'll go from there, you know, he did meet with Beth Black and, uh, because I think it was talked about at that office, maybe take on some planning and zoning responsibilities once the plan is completed, so. That's where we're at with planning and zoning.
Motion Twitter?